I'm in the meeting of the Middlesex County Board of Supervisors for our April meeting and would like to ask that Mr. Jesse open our meeting with prayer followed by Mr. Walker leading us into the pledge of allegiance.
Let's bow our heads in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we just like to thank you for giving us the help and strength to come this meeting today, dear Lord. Dear Lord, let's pray for this board as we continue to work on our budgeting process, dear Lord. And like to pray for the citizens who came out today who are concerned how the board decide decisions that we make. And dear Lord, let's pray for our service men and women overseas and help keeping them out of harm's way. These are all the blessings in my heavenly Father's name. Amen.
With all citizens of our nation, rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next item of business is approval of consent agenda and I believe the only thing that we had changing that was in the minutes where we had at least in three places called the Harmony Village District, the Harmony Grove District. So that will be changed in those three spots that they were in the minutes. Do we have a motion with regards to the approval of the consent agenda with that change?
And Mr. Chairman, you have one addition to the agenda and that is sending the B-Pole ordinance, draft B-Pole ordinance, to public hearing in the month of May, May 1st, I believe you missed.
B-Pole in the month of May.
That's it.
We have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion we approve the agenda with the correct changes.
Second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you very much. We'll now open the meeting to public comments. If you would come forward, state your name and address and speak loud and clear so we'd be sure to get your message.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, they say in the Bible, "Whose shall be first shall be last." So I wanted to come up here today to talk to you because this is the first time, I think, since I've been a grown man, that I have been sincerely disappointed in government. I've heard many times from this podium when taxes have been raised, that nobody has come, nobody has spoken up against the tax raise, raising of the taxes. But this time, that's not true. We've gone to various meetings, open forums that you had, Mr. Coontz, and many, many people have talked about the exorbitant increase in the taxes that we're going to face this year. In 2008, the county budget was a little over $14 million. This year, it's going to be over $24 million. That's a 7.2% increase per year over the last 10 years. Our rates have gone from 35 cents per hundred to this year may be over 63, 65 cents a hundred. That's about an 80, 82% increase. I'd like to know, since we haven't had any raises for the schoolteachers over the last 10 years, that's what I've been told, there haven't been any, I can think of one small raise and that they are deserving of a raise. Where the hell has that money gone? That's 7% a year. An average individual here that's working started 10 years ago at $23,000 a year. Today, it's $29,000 for that same person. That's a 26% increase in their pay over the last 10 years. 2.6% a year. And yet, this year, we're going to stand and ask the taxpayers of this county for over a 15% increase in their taxes? I've worked hard. I don't have a college education. I have a couple of years of college. This year, I'll be paying over $5,000 a year in personal and real estate tax on an income that hasn't gone up at all since I've been retired, except 1.3%, excuse me, on social security. I'd like you all to think long and hard about this. This is unfair, unjust to the people of this community. There's a place in the middle. The truth is not always on one side or the other. Someplace in the center. Thank you all very much.
My turn. The Ballers, Lyndon Muller from Kilmer's Point. Back in January, at the board meeting, Chairman Holt thanked us for bringing alternative ways of generating revenue before the board. But the reality of that was, we started making these requests 10 years ago. My husband started talking about land use in 2008 and it was known even back then that we couldn't make a change until a year of reassessment. And here we are, caught again. The board's gotten interested in doing it now, but golly gee, not a reassessment year. So that one's off the board this year. The lodgings tax, we've been talking about since 2010. Nobody wanted to go for that one. Now that you've gotten interested, whoops, we gotta go before the general assembly and mm, we're too late because we can't get on Delegate Hodges' list. So what I want to ask is, at the end of this budget cycle, let's not just stop working on things to generate revenue for the future. Let's keep it on the front burner. Let's move forward on some things other than taxing people's personal property and their real estate. And the other thing I want to say is to thank John Coontz for the town hall meetings that he had. I attended the one in Delta Ville. And I come before the board and speak as other people do and it's a comment period. We get no feedback. I come to workshops, I can't say anything. You all do make yourselves available for us to have a one-on-one conversation, but that's not in the light of day. So I really appreciate what Mr. Coontz is doing with his town hall meetings and I would request that other members consider doing the same thing. Thank you.
I thought maybe you'd like a different last name. Monica Sanders, the top in Virginia. I will say that I liked everything they said and a couple of things have not been considered. The teachers get paid 12 months, but they aren't working 12 months. They're off during summer to a large degree. And I know they have some projects and they have some continuing education to do, as do nurses and a lot of other people. And they have a lot of their things paid for. They have their retirement paid for and they have their other stuff paid for that most working people don't. So that's something to consider. And I'm not against teachers. I understand the common core is going to kind of go downhill and not be here anymore. But we have a lot of retired people and that's all they have is social security and they're not going to be able to afford to eat or their medicine or there's going to be something. And I feel really bad for some of these people and you may not see them because they don't have a car anymore or they can't drive or they're just too old to get to some of these meetings. And so as you consider doing this, you might want to consider thinking about their ability to function. A friend of mine saw everybody up in actually, this has been a little while ago, but he went house to house, I think he was running against Wayne Jesse, but he said he met people he could not believe then. And I think, how long ago was that? Mr. Jesse?
About four years.
That was about four, four years?
Eight years.
Eight years ago. It was eight years ago when they were having trouble making ends meet then. So that was something I took from that. So I think the total rate increase is just really higher than a lot of people that do it. People who are working, people who retired here that are rich and have bank accounts or they have stocks and they have things to adjust for, it's going to be easier for them. I have 43 chickens that depend on me and that may not mean anything to you guys, but I would like to keep feeding them. And their eggs don't nearly bring as much as you might think. Anyway, thank you.
Good afternoon. Robert Jackson, Urbana. Mr. Chairman, board members, once again, it's budget time. For two of you members, this is your first time experiencing this. I hope whatever decision you make, it's not a persuaded one. Budget time in Middlesex County always means an increase in real estate and personal property taxes. After reading several studies that were done for this county, it was obvious that some teachers and the sheriff's office need some funding. The only question is, how much? Here are the facts as I see it. Paying a competitive wage helps attract qualified teachers. Helping qualified teachers on staff leads to improved education and job opportunities for students. What I can't understand is how raising salaries for teachers will grow the tax base if the students they are teaching are moving away. Thus, we have another instance of money going out and no money coming in. The school studies show that 45.9% of school employees are within range and 24.59% of school employees are paid above the grade. What I find alarming here is how some teachers are being overpaid. The question I have is who is to be held accountable for this? For this reason, I oppose the 7% salary increase, but like some people in this county, I agree that there are teachers underpaid, but not all. For bigger issues for this board of supervisors is a lack of employment opportunities. Another is declining population, which is a serious issue for this county. With a stagnant tax base, revenue, and a declining population, and after reviewing the counter improvement plans, I definitely see no tax relief in the near future for taxpayers in this county. When it comes to salaries in this county, what I have researched and found is that most administrators here are making more than other administrators in other counties that have a larger population and tax base. Who is to be held accountable for this? As a taxpayer in Middlesex County, what we need to see is the county government, county schools, and the sheriff's office salaries published like other counties are doing. This would show taxpayers exactly where the monies are being spent. As for the sheriff's office, here again, we have to look at the facts. Middlesex County does not have the tax base like the surrounding counties, period. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Next person, please.
Tom Figum from Hartfield. I'm a little rare up here because I'm one of the few that, except for when Lyndon Johnson thought I belonged in Vietnam, I've been in small business. Managed some, then owned my own. When I got a raise, when I earned more money, it was because I was more productive. It was because I had more customers, it was because I had larger volume of sales, things like that. Maybe unusual or strongly harmed for some people who've never been in business. I have cousins from Michigan to Texas and California and back in teaching. I have their children who are in teaching. We have a number of teachers over in the area where we live. Some are retired, some are active. Wish I could live that lifestyle. I'd have another car, I'd have a new car, might have a bigger boat, certainly a bigger house to live in. One of the issues that I have is when we look at how teachers are graded or assessed, it has to do, it should have to do with the performance that these kids are capable of once they graduate from high school. And if you look at how we are ranked across this country, we are somewhere between 20 and 30 points down from the top educated high school students in this world. Give some thought to that. And now we're going to pay them an 18% raise this year because they're doing that poorly at educating our students? I think we need to run that by a little bit before we jump into it. At the same time, raising the taxes. We have 20 slips where we live in our little community. There are five boats currently in those slips owned by residents. There's another one there for sale. The rest of the slips are empty and probably will be empty because most of those people don't own a boat anymore or have that boat out of the county. We've had no real, serious, new residential construction in this county for how long? Couple of years? And so when we start looking at where the county is, we better take that into serious consideration when we're talking about where the pay is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Figum.
Now you get to hear from the other Figum. I'm Trudy Figum and I'm from Hartfield. I want to echo Lyndon Muller's comments to John Coontz, thanking you for holding your town halls. I think it was a wonderful opportunity for citizens to come together, speak informally, and tell you what was on their minds. And I encourage all of you to do the same. I think it was very much worthwhile. As I told John that night after the town hall at Hartfield, I really hope that you all have a solid agreement with the school board and the administration that this money is definitely going to go to teacher salary increases. You remember, not that long ago, and I remember Jack Miller sitting here talking about it, the fact that we want this money to go to teacher salary increases, and it didn't happen. The superintendent decided that it needed to go elsewhere and the school board supported that. So it went to administration, it went to school programs, it didn't go to the teachers. So I really encourage you to get solid agreement. John assured me he has a great, great relationship with Dr. Rets and I applaud that. I also know that as a board, you can vote the school budget up or down, but you don't have any say-so over every line item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Figum. Any other speakers, please? If not, then we will close the public comments section of the meeting and move on to reports from constitutional officers. We have a written report from the treasurer, which are on pages 33 through 35 in your board packet. After that, we move on to agency and staff reports. Do we have anyone from the Department of Transportation? I have not seen.
Roland Lutz here.
As Matt would say, the usual suspects don't appear to be here. So I'm presuming that we don't have a report from the Department of Transportation.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a request of the administrator on that front?
Yes.
With the two bridges being shut down in the windstorm last month, is there any way we can request that VDOT give us a formal answer as to why they were left open as long as they were?
Absolutely.
And I honestly don't understand how that procedure works and the extent to which our local VDOT makes those calls, but I've got a number of constituents that cross that bridge regularly and having to go all the way up to Port Royal and back, I think they deserve to understand why we decided to keep those bridges open.
We'll be done.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. School matters, we have an appropriation request on page 36 of your board packet.
It's really a budget transfer.
Budget transfer, okay.
I pulled the wrong one.
Do you want to represent that for us, Betty?
If I can get it up here. What page is that on?
36. I'll fill in some of the blanks. FY 2018-4 from expense fund account, transportation supplies and the amount of $25,000 to expense fund account maintenance supplies in the same amount of $25,000.
That's true.
How did it?
You did great.
Great. Do we have a motion on the budget transfer request?
So moved. Seconded.
Have a motion and seconded and a discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered. Social Services is report only, pages 37 through 39 in your packet. And I think I see Michelle Brown in the back and she's going to talk to us about the River Realm. Come forward, Michelle.
Could I briefly make a comment on Social Services?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to mention that it was very impressive to see Rebecca Morgan presenting Rotary on behalf of the Department of Social Services this morning. She really does a great job of explaining all of the programs that Social Services is involved in and it was eye-opening for a lot of our community members, so I'm appreciative.
She's given a presentation to Christchurch Parish on Sunday.
She was at Quanis last night, so she's making around.
It's a good thing. The community needs to understand all the social services that the county's providing and she and her office do a great job.
Take it away, Michelle.
Thank you for having me today, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors. I'm happy to share today the very first annual report with Virginia River Realm. We kicked off the launch of Virginia River Realm, March of 2016, so we've been out there for a full year now. And I just wanted to bring you up to date on the things that we've been doing and some of the Google Analytics that we have found. First of all, I just want to let you know, for the few new board members and some of the people who may not be familiar with Virginia River Realm, really, Virginia River Realm is a tourism destination branding for our region and it's really, the purpose is to sustain and grow our small businesses. Sorry. I probably don't even, I probably don't even need a microphone. So the main reason is to help support our small businesses, our marinas, our retail shops, our museums, and our restaurants. And a lot of those companies have very minimal online presence, so it really gives us a presence in the digital world. Again, the goal here is to bring new visitors to our region, have them spend dollars here. And really, tourism is a very low investment for the revenues that it can bring in as far as generating. It can increase the visitors through many options that we can have. Sorry, I lost my place. It can bring in revenue through meals tax, lodging tax, sales tax. Visitors could eventually become second homeowners, boat owners, homeowners, and it also retains our hospitality-related businesses. And the more those businesses are thriving, the more likely they are to grow and expand and create jobs for our community so our young people can stay in the community. All right, so who is actually coming to Virginia River Realm website? Our eight metropolitan areas, as we figured, the three main ones that we really focus on are Hampton Roads, Washington DC, and Richmond. We are specifically geographically marketing to those three regions. The demographics of who is visiting our website, we currently know that our major demographics right now are the baby boomers in the three large sections of the pie, but we are really pushing to market to the millennials as well. The millennials are a huge population, 83 million of them, and we want to make sure that they are aware of traveling to our destination so we have a new generation that will come, be boaters, travel here, stay here, buy homes, so on and so forth. And one of the interesting things that I've found, 54% of the people who are looking at our website are on mobile, on their cell phones. Desktop's about 29% and tablet's about 17. So the world's digital and they're using their phones. We're increasing, which is exactly what we're hoping, that we're just getting more and more visits, the more we get out there, the more awareness we have. We have reached 4% of Virginia. 342,000 people is 4% of Virginia. I feel like that's pretty good. I'm pretty excited about that. 41 of those are actually website visitors. They actually have come to our website, stayed on the website, usually for about a minute, two minutes, which is pretty good. We have about 4,000, a little over 4,000 followers. That means they're passionate, they want to know more, they want us to talk to them regularly. So we have a newsletter and on Facebook. About 20,000 have gone to the Virginia River Realm and looked up business directories. That means they want to know where that business is. They want to call that business. They want to find out more information. Almost 7,000 have externally gone from Virginia River Realm to that particular business's website. So let's just take for an example, they look up camping, they go to Bethpage, then they actually go to Bethpage's website. That's huge. People are spending a long time doing that and that's great. So that means what we're doing is working. The top 20 referrals, this is numbers of businesses, so when I have gone to Virginia River Realm looking up a site, 425 people have actually gone to Urbana Seafood and looked up their website for more information. That's how Virginia River Realm is helping their business. They're actually sending them more information. What's the menu? What are their hours? What's the place look like? All of that is what they're searching for. This is a little Google search that we did. We wanted to see how many people were actually spending the night here. So we did a search on lodging and one was in Kilmarnick, one in Urbana, and one in Irvington. As you can see, the little bars are growing, which is what we want them. Roll does not grow fast, it's a gradual growth. So I think any growth is good growth. That is showing a positive measure and it's a strong indicator that what we're doing is working. Again, people are looking up to search to book an overnight. Those are outside people coming in to our area to spend money and the longer they stay here, the more money they spend. These are some of the financials. The buy-in to be in Virginia River Realm for the counties, which is Lancaster County and Kilmarnick County, is $25,000 a year. And that money goes towards maintaining a little bit of our website, which we don't want to spend too much money on the website. We really want to spend that money on direct-to-consumer marketing. That means we do a lot of digital, a lot of social media, a lot of campaigns that are getting outsiders into our community. We do do a little bit of print, local material, so that way our ambassadors and businesses are seeing who we are and what we're doing. How we're measuring this, we're measuring it by sales tax. As you can see, we have an increase, so that's great. Sales are up for both counties. Kilmarnick and for meals tax and lodging tax are both up, which is fabulous. Meals tax for Middlesex is a little bit slower growth, but still growth. How do we do it? These are the three campaigns that we did in 2017 and we know that the one thing that draws a lot of millennials, and of course, anybody, because everybody likes food, so we did a foodie guide. That's one thing that we really feel like will help boost our restaurants here, keep them in business, but also bring people to the area because one thing that we do have that's unique is waterfront dining. That's who we are. The river, the lifestyle, having some seafood on the water is one. The river, the lifestyle, having some seafood on the water is one of the great things that we all love and cherish here. The other thing that we did, we had a very separate Virginia Oyster Country presence. This year, we combined that. We thought that Virginia Oyster Country really couldn't stand alone just being oysters, and Virginia River Realm really needed a stronger oyster presence. So we merged the two. They've become one. Virginia Oyster Country is still around, it's just under the umbrella of Virginia River Realm. And it's been doing great. That's pretty much all we promote all fall. It really gets a lot of people here September through early December. Thirteen Unique Experiences was our first campaign, and it was very, very successful. And it's pretty much, we've never had a package of, "What do we do when you get here?" Restaurants ask that, retail shops get asked that, and they had to be tour guides. Well, something different came to me the other day, and she said, "I'm so thankful that you have Virginia River Realm, because now I don't have to say, 'Well, let me see, what's going on this weekend.'" She'll say, "Go to Virginia River Realm, here's some cards, here's all the events that are happening, here's all the really cool things, and here's how you get there." That's the unique experiences. These are all itineraries to get people around our area. For us, it's easy, but if you come from Washington DC, it can be very intimidating. So it's been very, very popular. Other accomplishments, one thing that we're really, really proud of, Virginia Tourism has actually put Virginia River Realm on their website. They didn't even ask us, they just put us out there. We're happy to do it, we would've said yes anyway. But we are, can't really see, I don't know if I have that little, we have a little, you know, right there, that little area.
Up, down, around?
Up. That little corner right there, bottom right-hand corner, where it says Oyster Farms.
Oh, I see. No? I'm not helping.
That's okay. Anyway, we actually are Virginia River Realm, and we're on the Virginia Tourism page, which is really, what they're saying is, "Your all's branding is so great, we want to share it with all of our million Virginia Tourism," which is pretty impressive. We were really, really excited about it. We've started blogging, so we have all kinds of stories. What to do with your girlfriends, where to go fishing.
Girlfriends?
Yeah. Well, it could be, like, "I met girls and other girls, like, girls weekend." But she could bring girlfriends, too. If you want to hide away.
This is no place to hide.
The guys fishing. Yes, you could take your girlfriend fishing, too, if you wanted. We also have, you know, again, foodies, a lot of foodie places, a lot of other little blogs with your families, coffee shops, boutique hotels, those are all really great little stories. We've also did stories on a lot of the fishermen and the boating and watermen. BuzzFeed was another really huge one. BuzzFeed asked to use some of our information. BuzzFeed, I don't know if you know, but all the millennials on their little Snapchat are scrolling, they don't read the newspaper. They're getting their news off of a little scrolling at the bottom, and BuzzFeed is that news. And we were on it, which is pretty awesome. So, again, we did the project with the boots. I don't know if you've all seen the boot trail, but I highly recommend if you get around to doing that, that's another little cool thing. Testimonials, I'll let you all read through these, but this is just businesses who are saying, again, Virginia River Realm has made a difference in our business, and we're really happy to have them support us. And because videos are the new wonderful way to get everybody's attention, I have a little spring video to show you. I hope some of the events-
Andrew Frieden likes your River Realm.
Andrew Frieden is one of our best promoters. We love him, too, yeah. I think his sidekick, Nikki, just bought a house in Kilmarnick area, so we'll keep her close by, too.
Mr. Chairman, at the risk of being a little Pollyanna and having the habit of complimenting all of our different departments, I'm going to go ahead and say some words about Michelle's work here. I think we really are at the cutting edge of how a community should be advertising itself and doing so on a very limited budget. The fact that the Virginia State picked that up, and BuzzFeed, it really speaks volumes to her team and the work that they're doing, and I'm very, very happy that that office is in place in doing the work that they're doing.
Thank you, sir.
You ready for the video?
Yes. It's fun. It's a fun part of the job, so, and it's nice to see the interaction with the community, so I appreciate it. I appreciate the EDA a lot for supporting us on financing that and making this all happen. Do you have any questions?
Just one question, should I have Michelle, just to clarify. So this is a fully funded, it's funded campaign-
Yes.
...enterprise, and that businesses can just contact you to get involved?
Yes. We will list any hospitality industry for free. There's no buy-in. The county, right now, it's our EDA who contributes the money for funding for this each year. And I believe Lancaster County also, the Board of Supervisors is contributing to the budget in addition to the town of Kilmarnick. We're working with Urbana on contributing, they have contributed in the past, and we're working on hopefully this year, too. And I think that Susan, my counterpart in Lancaster, is asking Irvington as well to buy into the program, but it is funded by the government. Yep. And any businesses in that are interested-
What is the budget, Michelle?
Excuse me?
What is the budget?
We have really, for the last couple of years, been spending about $60,000 a year, 60 to 75. Our wish would be $100,000 each year. That would allow us to probably move into maybe even commercials on TV. We're not quite there yet, but anywhere between 75 and 100,000 a year would be very, it would be very worthwhile. But lately, I'd say we're probably closer to that 65.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Michelle, thank you. Our next item of business involve appointments to various commissions and so forth. This would be pages 56 through 62 in your board packet. There was one application from Stephen Richardson for the Planning Commission in the Pantop District, which did not make your packet, but I believe it's, Beth, you sent that out to everybody. So, how do we like to deal with these? We've got several. Do you want to deal with them? Just name them, run through them, and vote on them as a group?
As a group.
Okay. Y'all looking at me like you want me to do it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we've got Joan Curtis from Harmony Village, and this is for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
That's a recommendation that you all make to the Circuit Court Judge-
Correct.
-who actually does the appointment.
Got you. And the next one is Janet Riggs, and that would be for the Economic Development Authority.
No, for the Water Authority.
It's got checked economic development on the one that I'm looking at.
Did she also have written down at the bottom, Water Authority?
She'd like to see the construction through and like to serve another term on the Water Authority, but that wasn't a checked part, so. And we get to my favorite one now, is Carlton Revere would like to be on the Water Authority for another term, and he lists his qualifications. Of course, he served on the Water Supervisors. He has served on the Middlesex Water Authority for the last four years, but he also lists himself as a snappy dresser and a good conversationalist. Serving with Carlton, I can highly recommend him.
Mr. Chairman, in an abundance of caution, the county attorney and I have requested pictures of said snappy dress-
Okay.
...and at least conversational samples to-
To verify qualifications.
Does that cover all of our appointments?
And I believe Chip Holt's appointment to the Water Authority, too, Betty, is that correct?
That's a board appointment.
Board appointment, okay.
Is he going to do that again?
Should we get pictures of that, too?
Yeah, I think my term expires in June.
And then the Planning Commission, the person that you-
Stephen Richardson for the Planning Commission, I think I said that at the beginning.
And there's one other of them. That's it for citizen appointments, then you would also need to appoint someone to fill Mr. Miller's position on the Planning District Commission.
Okay, well, let's act on these.
The citizen, yeah?
Do we have a motion for these appointments?
I'll move that the appointments be moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kathy, do you know anything about what it is that he's talking about? Because I was sort of hoping to talk to you about that before now, and it got to slip my mind.
I know a little bit about it, and it is something I'd be willing to do-
Wonderful.
If it's the appropriate time.
So do we vote on her?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion for Kathy to serve on the P-
Middle Peninsula Planning District.
Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered. Am I done, Betty, with that?
I believe so.
No, there's one more after that.
One more appointment?
Unless someone would like to volunteer to be on the Community Policy and Management Team, we have a vacancy on that.
I am under-informed on that, so I would defer to any of my colleagues.
What compels us to have that filled by a board member?
I want to think there's some code referencing that, John.
In the compulsion, what if we don't?
Well, we haven't.
We haven't for a while.
Well, we've had an appointment, but not a lot of attendance, and that's okay. The policy management team is made up of enough individuals to connect business, but if a board member is interested in serving, we would love to have one.
May I just ask that the administrator provide me with more detail on what that is offline?
Absolutely.
And I'll see if that's something that I can find time for.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you, John. Okay, now does that complete? All right, next item of business is we do have a special election on the November Tuesday for regular board meetings, and as is our tradition, we do not have a board meeting on Election Day. So we've looked at the calendars and think maybe the following day, Wednesday, the 7th, would be appropriate for that meeting. Do we have a consensus that that's a good day?
All right, I so moved.
Well, we got a motion, let's have a second. I don't think there are any discussions. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered. And we move on to pages 63 through 67 appropriations, and Betty, I presume you'll walk us through that.
I will attempt these. Most of these are in-and-out appropriations. The first is the Virginia Department of Fire Program's monies that are given to localities each year to help support volunteer fire departments. You'll see the three, it's broken down, we break it down into the three departments. Urbana receives the funding for the Middlesex Volunteer Fire Department that's housed in Urbana, so that's just an in-and-out. Money's coming from the state. Jimmy, you want to do these as a group?
Would you like to just-
I'm happy to do them all as one.
Walk through all of them, okay.
Number FY 2018-26 is the Virginia Rules Camp. These are monies that have been collected for that program. They're ongoing collections, they've received or have collected. You've done one appropriation, I think, last fall, but this is more money that's come in, and I'd just like to put it into the expense side so that they can start spending that and getting ready for camp this summer. Number 27 is the Parks and Rec Department has collected to date $14,000 over there in fees that have been collected for the Parks and Rec program, for some of their programs, and we'd like to put that back into the expense side and continue paying the instructors. Number 28, number 28 is just a refund that we received where we had paid, overpaid for some training. That was actually reimbursed from the Department of Forestry, so that's just putting that money back into the emergency services training line. Number 29 is insurance reimbursement going back into the sheriff's budget to help pay for some repairs to vehicles.
Okay, do we have a motion for the disposition of FY 2018-25 through 29?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second, any discussion?
I just want to mention that the Virginia Rules Camp has actually expanded. That's been so successful, and largely on the back of one of our school resource officers that's really dedicated herself, Melinda Hart. And so that's a success that we're seeing, and I think it's another one of those things where we work with our young people, and we may not see the dividends pay for a number of years, but I'm confident that Melinda Hart is really doing something great with that money, and that's a great use of our funds. I'll get off my soapbox, though.
Okay, next item is resolutions, and we-
You vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered. Under resolutions, we have the first one for Bay Aging.
Mr. Chairman, Kathy Vesely has approached the podium. She's the Director of Bay Aging. We have resolutions been presented. Would you like staff to read it, or would you like Kathy to say a few words first?
Thank you.
That's a few words.
I don't know.
Would you like me to read?
That would be awesome.
In recognition of 40 years of distinguished service by Bay Aging, whereas for 40 years, Urbana-based Bay Aging has provided and brought continuous improvement to an array of services needed by older adults and people with disabilities, and whereas, Bay Aging was founded on June 26, 1978, in response to a pressing need for supportive services for frail older citizens in the Northern Neck and Middle Peninsula. And whereas, Bay Aging had developed a unique and successful model of service delivery and advocacy for rural Virginia. And whereas, Bay Aging's vision has enabled it to offer numerous solutions for older adults, people with disabilities, and their caregivers, including meals-on-wheels delivery, care coordination, care transitions intervention, adult daycare, assistive devices, caregiver support, personal assistance, volunteer opportunities, environmental support, in-home care, public transportation, mobility management for people with disabilities, housing development and rehabilitation weatherization, indoor plumbing, and other housing support services. Whereas, during its 40-year history, Bay Aging's contributions have generated invaluable support from the government, businesses, the community, and volunteers, and have led to partnerships that deliver services to older adults, people with disabilities, their caregivers, and others in Middlesex and beyond. Now therefore be it resolved that the Middlesex Board of Supervisors hereby commends Bay Aging on the occasion of its 40th anniversary. And be it resolved further, the staff prepares a copy of this resolution for presentation to Bay Aging as an expression of the Board of Supervisors' respect and admiration for the organization's work and commitment to older adults, people with disabilities, caregivers, and other citizens of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Adopted at the regular meeting of the Middlesex County Board of Supervisors, held on Tuesday, April 3, 2018. A copy test signed. Matthew Walker, clerk. April 3, 2018, a copy test signed, Matthew Walker, Clerk.
John, I think you want to get a picture of y'all.
What do you want to do, the seal?
Do the whole board if you want.
Congratulations, Kathy.
It has truly been an honor, and we look forward to 40 more years.
We want you for another 40 more years. All right, in line with resolutions, we've got the Telecommunicators Week. David, I believe you're gonna come up and kick that off.
Mr. Chairman, members of boards, thank you. It's my honored to be here this afternoon to recognize your 911 Telecommunication Center. Next week, I want to bring to your attention, the 8th through the 14th, is the National Telecommunicator Week, and this is time that we have to recognize the hard work and efforts of our telecommunicators. These folks do a tremendous job multitasking, and we have put forth a resolution, the board has adopted a resolution, would like to read it, and then we present it to Eileen Cole, who is our 911 Supervisor. Recognizing the staff of Middlesex County 911 Communication Center in commemoration of the 2018 National Telecommunicator Week, whereas on October 9, 1991, the Congress of the United States proclaimed the second week of April as a national public safety telecommunicator week, and whereas the public safety telecommunicators throughout the nation provides outstanding service in performing of one of the most critical and stressful functions involved in public safety, and whereas the telecommunicators of Middlesex County 911 Communication Center answer emergency calls for assistance, serving as the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas the safety of the deputy sheriffs, firefighters, and emergency medical service members that serve our citizen is dependent on the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from the citizens who use the 911 system, and whereas the public safety telecommunicators provide the single most vital link where our deputy sheriffs, firefighters, emergency medical service members, by monitoring their activities through radio communications, providing them life-saving information, ensuring their safety, and whereas each day, public safety communicators exhibit compassion, understanding, professionalism during the performance of their job. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim the week of April 8 through 14, 2018, as National Telecommunicator Week in Middlesex in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keeps our county and citizens safe. Adopted this third day of April 2018 by those members present in voting. Certification, I, Matt Walker, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors of Middlesex County, Virginia, certify that the foregoing is true and correct. Copy of the resolution passed at the lawful, organized meeting of the Board of Supervisors Meeting, Middlesex County, held in Salute of Virginia at 3:00 PM on April 3, 2018.
Thank you, sir. Need a motion to that effect, or are we done? Motion?
So moved.
Second. Second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I gotta tell all of you that Middlesex is blessed to have a wonderful group of dedicated dispatchers over there. So if you ever get a chance to meet any of them, I'm not gonna, I will accept this for them, but it's their hard work that gets the help that you need to them.
Who's the leader?
That would be me.
That's why you're here. And now we move on to grant acceptance for Hummel Field, and Betty, I think you were gonna give a short intro to David McCalment, who's our, John McCalment is our engineer.
I was gonna say, how about John? How about John McCalment?
I'm inverting him all today. Do you want him just to come up?
He can just come up.
John McCalment is our engineer for Hummel Field for the year, and he'll talk to us on the grant from the Virginia Department of Aviation.
Okay, well, basically, this is a follow-up to a little bit of the presentation I gave previously, and what we've done now is we have coordinated numerous times with the Division of Aviation, Virginia, and created a scope of work that's gonna outline the requirements that they see necessary to figure out what it's gonna take to improve the airport to meet current standards, what it's gonna take to maximize the funding capability or funding opportunities, and kind of move forward with that. One of the things that they've added into this is evaluation of the airfield from a classification role standpoint. So all airfields in Virginia have a role assigned to them. Right now, Hummel Field is at the bottom role, so to speak. So the funding that they get, this reimbursement from the state, is only on a maintenance level, essentially. So they'll help you preserve your pavement, or pavements, and some little bit of things here and there, but that's it. So they want, they would ask the county to look at what is it gonna take to go to the next level up, to be a GA community role, which opens up the opportunity for the state to provide funding for the improvements of the airfield. So in order to do that, we have to evaluate a number of things, and it looks at the airfield itself, the standards, the socioeconomic benefits, the usage of the airfield, a lot of other components that go into this, and tied to that role change coordination is gonna be the evaluation of potential extension of the runway or realignment of the runway, and how that's gonna play with the various roles and the various standards that apply, because there are different standards as far as runway width, length, slopes, grades, safety areas off the ends, on the sides, and approach slopes. All that changes depending on what role you're in. So depending on what classification the airport is currently considered, that's a different set of standards. But in order to truly evaluate what the airport is and where it needs to go, and what the benefits are associated with that, you have to evaluate each one, and they're gonna want each one of those considerations included in a report and presented to the state Virginia Aviation Board for consideration of what to do next. So what we've done is finally worked with the DOAV to get a scope prepared that meets what they're looking for for a feasibility study, essentially. It started out being a runway feasibility study, just because that's the goal, that was what we were looking for, and then throughout this effort, the state has decided to alter that name to be more of a Airport Development Feasibility Study. So we look at all types of aspects of this. So it kind of exploded, but at the same time, the board also adopted a new resolution statewide to consider these feasibility studies for all small local service airports, because before that wasn't a normality. It wasn't something typically completed. So now they see the benefit and the need for something like this, and the level of effort that it's gonna take to get them the information that they need so they can put it in their system statewide and see how it competes with all the other projects in the state. So there's no ground construction action with this. This is getting the state the information that they need so the county can say, this is how we want to proceed, can you get on board? So it's a gathering of information and data, in a sense, and then a submittal of basically two reports, one that's gonna be airport development focused and one that's gonna be airport role classification focused. So that's what this is. And it has been approved by Virginia Aviation Board at their last meeting, February.
Could you expand on the cost of this and the upfront monies and the 80/20 and that sort of thing?
Yes, it's, this study is 57,000, or 51,700, and the state has been, or has offered to pay 80%. So essentially, Virginia is gonna pay 80% of that, and then from another source would need to come the other 20%.
And I can elaborate on that, Mr. Chairman. During our budget work session this morning, we discussed this briefly. The way the state funding works, we have to seek reimbursement on monies expended, so the county would have to front the cost of the 51,000, and then we would be reimbursed upwards, well, to a maximum of $41,360.
So it's out of our pocket $10,000?
Ultimately, yes, sir. Our contribution would be $10,340.
And I think it's important to note that that airport has been hemmed in by the highway on one end and by a property owner that didn't like the airport on the other end. We only had 2,200 feet, and that is not a, I used to fly, and that wasn't what I wanted to bring a single engine in on, because if anything went wrong, you didn't have a lot of room. A citizen has bought the property on the north end of the runway, and this study is to take a look at a 500-foot runoff if necessary and/or a runway realignment, and I just would like, I've looked at this from a half a dozen different ways. The runway realignment will allow us to get up to, what, 31,700 feet or something?
Very feasibly over 3,000 feet, yes.
And along with that comes the bonus that that approach and takeoff path takes you out over a cove that probably goes out a half a mile where the water's only about four feet deep. So if anybody had any problem, they can just stand on the wing and wait for help, and it diverts this traffic from over top of houses. And that, to me, is the, we get more runway to be safer for pilots, and we get the airplanes away from houses to where if there was a mishap, that somebody on the ground could be impacted. So I think that this is something that is worthy of study, and Jamie Bonart and I went to the Virginia Department of Aviation meeting when this was preliminarily approved, and it's been sort of exciting, because we were hemmed in and didn't have any possibilities to do anything differently, and we've got an opportunity to improve safety in all the airport.
And another part of the reason in looking at all this is, obviously with the opportunity with landowner up north, but then the realignment was being considered because of that option of getting the state to come on board and help pay for it. Clearly, that's gonna cost a little bit more to build a new runway than just extend the one that's there. But like you said, the opportunities are very real, that you could just slightly turn the runway a couple degrees over to the right, and then the airports don't come in over the neighborhood anymore, or the airplanes, they just start coming in over the water. That's a huge benefit. Not only provides more runway, and you're right, the existing runway is just under 2,200 feet, and if you look at the FAA's charts for standard runway length for airplanes that use the facility, 3,000 feet is what they say should be the minimum, minimum.
I also think it's important, anybody that has an interest in the neighborhoods around the airport, is that this change will not cause more and bigger airplanes to be in and out there, it's just gonna make things safer for the aircraft that are currently utilizing. It's not saying that somebody else won't come in, but this isn't gonna allow Learjets and all this, there's no change in that regard.
They would, jets would not be able to really come in on this.
I've still gotta leave my plane out of the county.
That's right, yours has to.
Yeah, there's no intention.
Fantasy islands where you can leave.
You could fly your helicopter.
Couple of questions. When the Virginia Aviation Board sort of changed the scope on us in a favorable manner, did that change the estimated engineering that we're getting funded?
Okay, so.
Where did we come from and what did we go to with that change, I guess is what I'm saying.
There's been numerous changes going back and forth. The first one that was issued.
Well, let me try again, Mr. McCalment. I don't need to go all the way back, but we just had basically the Aviation Board say, hey, that's a great project, let's expand your scope to this. I'm curious, what did our engineering number look like before they told us that versus now?
It was 10% less.
Okay.
And the scope probably increased 40%.
I like those numbers.
I don't like them.
So the next question is when.
Negotiating process, Betty Muncy.
She's tough.
If this is approved and we move forward, what's the timeframe that you start having these deliverables available to the Virginia Aviation Board, and what do we expect their turnaround to be once they see your deliverable?
Their turnaround is unknown. There's a schedule, if you scroll up to the other left, the, go up that way. So the goal, and this was put together a long time ago, so it's gonna depend on kickoffs and whatnot, there it is. So the idea would to have a small group session kickoff meeting as early as next week, and then, as you can see from there, the draft evaluation, we'd project to have it completed by June, early June, to have it ready for submittal, and then take the comments, make the corrections, make conditions, and then a month later, send in the final draft, and then from that point, go into the final meeting, which essentially takes everything that's been developed and gathered, and bring everybody back together to make sure all the points have been collected and gathered before the documents stapled, so to speak.
So understanding that no government agency can be accurately forecasted, from your experience with the Aviation Board and from your seeing them expand our scope for us, can you give me your best back-of-envelope guess? Are they gonna take six months, five years? Are my kids gonna be retired? What are we talking about?
I don't see it really extending too long past what we have shown here. The one handicap they have is they did lose one of their planning, their planners recently, so their workload has almost doubled for the people who are still there, but I don't know if they're gonna fill that position, so that might impact it. We do have a pretty good relationship with the division, so as submittals are turned in, the only thing that we've, in my opinion, the only thing they're gonna really be looking at is how can this be applied to other places? Because they're gonna want to make sure that how this is put together is almost a template of sorts.
Yep, and my last question, are we submitting this in a way where there are options that could come out of this other than realignment? I mean, as excited as I get about realignment, that's also the most costly project potentially there by.
Correct. It's the four, the four basic options that are gonna be evaluated are extension, there's gonna be two options for extension, one based on the current standards and one based on the next level up, and then the realignment, same way, current and existing. So essentially, four alternatives will be considered, and they'll have the estimates and the drawings and whatnot all associated with that. And this also includes kind of a planning projection, in a sense, so let's say it's however many dollars it is to do a project. Based on that project completion, we'd have a timeline plus an expected funding timeline to go with that. Say, where do we think we can get money from, and then when do we think the work can be completed feasibly? We're not just gonna say, let's go get $2 million and build it next year.
Right.
Because that doesn't happen. But we're gonna look at where we think it might be based on our best guess at that point, and how can we accomplish this in a reasonable manner.
Thank you.
And I think it's worthy of note that the hangars at the airport are paid off, and they can be an income source to offset the 20% that the county would conceivably pay going forward with a project. That's way out there.
Room for expansion there as well.
Room for expansion on more hangars.
Because they're doing well.
And we've got a survey out and got responses to, from pilots in local counties as to their interest, so we're trying to stay on top of that. Any other questions?
And didn't you say at the last meeting, you told me about the number of our based aircraft is very high compared with other?
Absolutely, it is, yeah. It's very high based on, or considering an airport like this, you know, to have 30-some based aircraft is a huge asset. There are, there's the national system from the FAA, the National Plan and Grade Airport System, NIPUS has referred to, they have a number of 10. So if an airport has 10 or more based aircraft, they're permitted to be in the system if they meet other qualifications. You have 30-some. So the opportunity is there, and that also shows that it's very important to the community. So, the opportunity is there, and that also shows that it's very important to the community if you have that many individuals that house their aircraft there and need the facility. Um, yeah, it's, that's a, a good bonus.
Any other questions? John, thank you. I know you had to adjust your schedule to, to make it here tonight, and I appreciate it, because it wouldn't have been a good idea for me to wing this.
We're glad to do it.
Thank you very much.
Are we needing a motion to approve?
Yes. Gentlemen and lady and gentlemen, I believe the business we have before us is the concept of, of fronting fifty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars for the engineering survey and all the work that, that Mr. McCalmon would be doing, eighty percent of which would be reimbursable, meaning that the county would be obligated to pay approximately ten thousand dollars.
So move.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Seconded.
Motion duly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Madam?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask that there be a small amendment to that motion to explicitly state that this is authorization also to enter into the grant agreement identified in your packet on page seventy-one?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
If that would be.
Yep, that's how I would like to amend my motion. Wait a second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? So ordered. Thank you, and John, thank you. All righty.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Marilyn South.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, just real quick, it may be a good idea at this hopper to, at this time to appoint a small committee. If the board wants to participate in greater numbers than the airport committee currently has representation on, airport committee would be the default, but if a couple of board members wanted to join on in that committee, now would be a good time to kind of ascertain who that may be.
All right, circle that back up again, I'm, something has.
For a study committee, for the kickoff meeting with the engineer.
Okay.
If there are other board members other than, I, I think you're appointed to the airport committee.
I'm on the airport committee.
If there wants, if there's a want to have another board member maybe participate with the airport committee, now would be a good opportunity.
Lady and gentlemen, do we have any interest?
I, I'd be more than happy to.
All right.
Pete, that'd be great.
Can I do it? Kathy?
Yeah, I, I would like to be.
All right.
There may be other committees coming up as a result of this meeting, so maybe before we pile on to the airport committee.
Yeah.
Let's make sure we.
Yeah, I would recommend you just have two.
That's right, yeah.
And that's fine. We'll take it down the road.
Pete and myself would make the two? Or, because I'm already on there, do we need one more?
No, that would be three.
You just need one more.
If Kathy would like to.
Yeah, it's in her district.
Well, would, would you like to be on, Kathy?
I would.
Okay.
You'll defer to Kathy?
Yeah.
Okay. So it'd be Kathy and myself.
And, not to be clandestine about my thinking, I just know that we do have a request from Urbana that's water-related, that it may mean a committee. I don't know if that's what we're going to decide or not, but it might make more sense to make sure that your district and your airport, your district and your water, and we're available.
Absolutely.
And I, and I might want to jump in on that one, too, if that's what we decide.
All right, well, Mr. Jamie Barnhart is the chairman of our airport committee, and is here, and I hope you're taking notes over who your other advisory folks will be now. Okay. All righty. I see Marilyn South back in the back, it's Dr. David Brown, yes, he's here, and so we're going to listen to a request for support for making Saluda a historic area.
Thank you all. Um, Dr. David Brown is with me, and he'll come up and speak in a minute. Ma'am, if you could just load this.
I'll be happy to.
It's just two slides.
Okay.
And it's labeled Saluda. What I'm asking for this year, if possible, is forty-nine hundred dollars to complete the survey of properties that the Department of Historic Resources identified with a 2016 study of the whole county. As Saluda has enough intact properties, that it would be very good to make this an historic district. And the museum recognizes the significance of historic tourism. Dr. Brown has worked on this, several similar projects. What we would do is if we can get this done this year, then, next year, we go to the Department of Historic Resources with a cost share, and they would support us, and we feel that is very likely, they've been very strong in helping us to complete the designation of it as an historic district. So I'd like you to listen to Dr. Brown, hear what he has to say, and then, we're both here for any questions. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm used to these being evening things, so it's kind of nice to do it in the middle of the day. I'm the co-director of the Fairfield Foundation. Our organization is a not-for-profit that provides advice, and essentially, resources that deal with historic and cultural resources across the Middle Peninsula and the surrounding regions. We just opened up the gas station down on Main Street. We had a ribbon cutting the other week, and as part of this service that we provide to the region of the Middle Peninsula and beyond, is we comment on issues like this, when someone is curious about how to establish an historic district on the state and federal registers of historic places, why they should do it, why they might not want to do it, what financial benefits would come with it, what connections it has with local zoning, source of pride, recognition, all of those things. Working with the Middlesex County Museum and Historical Society, also working with the DHR in the past, and having recently placed the Matthews Downtown Historic District on the state and federal registers of historic places, it seems very appropriate for Middlesex to be considering at this time the potential placement of Saluda in that same designation. If you can select one forward. The Department of Historic Resources submitted a preliminary form, which is the initial step at gauging whether a district is eligible for the state and the federal registers. Those are selective and limited, so not every property is eligible, not every district is eligible. So what you see in front of you is an image of what they recommend to be the boundaries of the historic district, which essentially focuses on the core historic properties in the district dating all the way back to the eighteenth century, but predominantly looking at that period between the mid eighteen hundreds and extending all the way through until the, until right up until about fifty years ago. By going ahead and looking at a focused and concentrated area, they're trying to go ahead and capture the essence of that town and its historic integrity. It's also trying to look at the most intact portions, and also acknowledging that there are significant, more recent resources within it that do not detract from the overall historic integrity. And in a program like this, it's common to have anywhere from forty to even sixty percent of the resources within the district not be of that period of significance. It's just, we don't have that many wholly intact colonial Williamsburgs anymore, and in this case, Saluda still has great significance for its historic integrity, and it could provide great benefits, not only in pride, but also in some financial incentives for property owners, business owners who are interested in, in utilizing some of the programs that are offered by the state, as well as the federal entities. If you go one more, our efforts usually focus on those financial incentives, but also the protections. And in this case, most often, the protections are correlated to reviews by the state and federal agencies. And so, the state and the federal agencies have to take into consideration before they do something in a locality, whether or not these properties are on the state and federal registers, which can in many cases give the localities more time to help integrate those things into the system. Or in some cases, it produces enough of a guidance against having those things impact local communities in a negative way. In addition to that, the power of public opinion is paramount, which means that having acknowledged the historic significance and integrity of an historic district often leads many property owners within it to use that as a source of pride, that not only leads to kind of a community building, but also essentially to protecting and making sure that those things aren't infringed upon when folks who are not well-bursted in the history of the county or connected with its community come in and are interested in developing. So, in a sense, while it doesn't put a tremendous amount of legal, or actually, doesn't put any kind of legal guidelines on a locality to do what per, private property owners or the county wants to do in an historic district, it does provide a certain amount of credibility to that district that guides people who are coming in with ideas and suggestions on what to do there. So, next slide, please. It focuses from, oh, I got the slide slightly out of order, my apologies. It does focus on these key elements that essentially give it a certain amount of understood significance, no matter where you come from, no matter what education level that you have. This is so that these districts are, are viewed in the same way across the United States. The criteria the state uses is the same exact criteria that the federals use, and so, in that instance, there's a certain uniformity if you're comparing the significance of a Saluda versus a Matthews County, sorry, Downtown Matthews, or looking at localities outside of the state of Virginia. One more. The Saluda Historic District has already been through the preliminary information form process, which had the state agree and the State Resources Review Board that it was worthy of designation should the locality and the private property owners decide that they think this is worthwhile. And the nomination is essentially that final step that compiles a tremendous amount of data, and then ultimately gives it the final designation. One more. And the process of doing so is one that usually takes anywhere from six months to a year and a half, depending on when the project starts, how much documentation is necessary, and then ultimately, the schedule of the state review board, which meets on a quarterly basis. The staff of the Department of Historic Resources spends a good two to three months reviewing the applications to ensure that there's uniformity, and that everything is done, every T is crossed, every I is dotted, and so this stretches the process out, but it does ensure that the process ends up meeting that very high standard set forward by the federal government. Virginia has the highest success rate, I think somewhere between ninety-eight and ninety-nine percent of its nominations reaching the federal level after they proceed through the state level. This is just a quick example of what we were doing in Matthews County. This is a substantially larger historic district for the Matthews area around Main Street, and it simply provides you with a level of documentation that we're looking at if one was to proceed with a nomination. You're essentially looking to document every standing structure within that proposed district, and in that process, you end up determining if it's contributing or non-contributing. And again, in this context, what you're essentially left with is, you're left with a determination that only bears on whether you want to use it when engaging with other incentive programs. So if somebody has the most significant property in the district, and it's privately held, they're still only conditioned to whatever the county has on its zoning. It doesn't actually provide any distinct historic protections to it outside of a sense of pride and the tendency by people on the national register not to want to go ahead and mess up something that's agreed to be historically significant. Okay, that's as quick as I can get through it. I, I teach on this, and it's usually an hour or so, so if you were put asleep by that, my apologies, it's, it's much worse if you're in the rest of the class.
Yeah.
The rest are just my personal notes, it's a, super tiny font, too, so it's hard enough to read. Yes, sir?
In this district, does this involve all, all the different structures in, in this district?
All of them are documented, and so they're able to go ahead and determine if they are contributing or non-contributing to the district. So if you had a food line, like you do down in Matthews, it was a non-contributing structure, which means that it's documented, but it's also not determined to be kind of a crucial part of the district.
But food line couldn't all of a sudden find somebody knocking on their door saying, you should not have had a blue light there?
Uh, correct. There's no design regulations, there's no guidelines that anyone has to follow, there are no local regulations that are triggered by placement on the state and federal registers. That's all something that state and federal, sorry, something that localities can investigate should they choose to. But we are not dealing with a Charleston-Savannah kind of, you can't paint your house pink because it's on the national register kind of scenario.
How, how many buildings in this district?
Um, the estimate that the state put forward was that there is about fifty-two resources that would need to be inventoried. And resources means essentially a primary structure, and then potentially a barn or a shed, or some, or garage, or something associated with it. So, essentially fifty-two properties that weren't already inventoried in that prior process by the state.
And the owners of those fifty-two properties, have they already said that they would like to be included?
Um, my understanding from the Historical Society is that there is some interest, but in a situation like this, the first real step in the process is to engage with the people in the district and to gauge essentially whether or not they think that this is what needs to go forward. Now, nine times out of ten, you're going to have a difficult time reaching one hundred percent of your property owners, but from my square, from my perspective, my business, when I go about doing a project like this, we try to engage with every single one of them. You want to go ahead and to meet them, shake their hand at the front door, and explain what the scenario is, because there's a lot of misinformation about projects like these. And the key is to go ahead and to bring pride to the community, not to go ahead and impose someone else's perspective on them. And because it's something that's basically meant to instill honor, and to provide incentives for programs that then have regulations should you choose to enter into that program. Like, the gas station that we're restoring, we're using rehabilitation tax credits, which gets us twenty-five percent of our expenditures back in tax credits. Now, we had to go through a lot of hurdles to do that, but we could have ignored it completely, we wouldn't have gotten any funding, and we wouldn't have had to follow anybody else's rules outside of the county of Gloucester. So it's one of those, if you choose to, you would qualify, and you could get some great financial benefits, but you also have to jump through some hoops. Somebody comes in, they want to do something at a local business down here, they're like, tax credits are not our thing, we don't want to do it, it's fine by them. There's plenty of buildings recently on Main Street in Gloucester, which has been an historic district on the state and federal registers for several years now, that have decided that was not their cup of tea to take advantage of one of the incentive programs. Ricky Wyatt, who's a local landscape architect and is fully aware of these things, he decided the barber shop he bought downtown that was right on Main Street was like, you want to do an Airbnb? So he restored it, he ripped off the whole front of it, he did a very beautiful job on it. It would not have qualified for tax credits, but he didn't want them, and it all worked out fine. So it's one of these options that become available to property owners if the designation is given, but it's certainly not something that's imposed on.
Who pays to inventory the buildings?
Say again, please.
Who pays to inventory the buildings?
So, the, the nomination is two stages. Inventory is the first stage of that, and typically, the most costly. A contractor is typically brought in to go ahead and to inventory the buildings, and that inventory involves three things. Photographs of the exterior, exterior only. Second is a form that fills out that describes that property to the best ability of the person who's surveying it. Third is a site plan, and this is essentially whatever can be observed from the property, with a property owner's permission, or from a public right-of-way. So it's not something that you're permitted to go onto someone's property just because you have the support of the county or otherwise. This is a situation where you knock on the door, and if the person says, get off my property, well, then you retreat back to the right-of-way, and if you need to document it, you can see what you can see, just like every other member of the public. Or maybe you take a step back and say, I'll schedule the time a little bit later to sit down and talk with them in the future, and hopefully, go ahead and get their permission at that time. It's why we don't like to rush things, and why we like to meet people in person. Now, that's me, my organization's local, that's how we do it. Not every place that you might go out and hire has the ability to say, come in from Richmond, and then come back three times until they get to the right time when the property owner's available and convince them. In that case, they typically look from the right-of-way, and then they say, okay, we'll capture what we can from there, and that's as legal as you get.
Who pays to inventory the building?
Aw, crap, that was your original question. Apologies. Sorry, it's the professor in me, gets my nose stuck up. It's a range. So, in Matthew's instance, the Matthews County folks went ahead and paid for the inventory, and then the state came in and matched it, and they went ahead and paid for the nomination preparation. In other instances, you could look to nonprofit organizations or individual donors if you wanted to collaborate with the county on that, so to speak, making it a public-private partnership. In the end, it all depends on how you want it to run. The best situations in things like these are when the county is supportive of it, and that they help with the community, fully engaged in doing it. And it's normally through nonprofits. So sometimes it's the county coming the money, and the nonprofit doing the administration, making sure things go right. The state of Virginia often goes into these cost shares, not only to throw in at least fifty percent of the cash, but also to handle all of the administration. And that's usually the biggest pain in the butt.
Has Dave Kretz been consulted on this? Does he, has he offered any opinions on?
We, Dave and I talked, he was concerned whether it had any impact on the zoning, it doesn't.
Okay.
No.
When I ask this question, I don't want you to think I haven't been listening, because I have been, but I want to be, be perfectly clear on something. I came from a community that would overlay historical zoning on residential, business districts, whatever else. Then that district was pretty well governed by something called an architectural review board.
Correct.
And you could not change a color, you couldn't put an air conditioner in the window, you couldn't put a plastic screen up in place of a metal screen without getting these people's permission. permission. I'm hearing you say that that's not what we're talking about here. But I equally want to make sure that we're not getting on a slippery slope where we might be heading in that direction. And if we do, we've just got our eyes wide open.
Well, this is an excellent question, because this is essentially, when I teach it, this is the Savannah/Charleston example, because it's the best-known historic districts in the country. And they also have some of the tightest regulations, because the people who have been fighting to preserve them have become very orthodox. And so in the same thing, we have an Architectural Review Board. I live in King William, but I teach at the college. So in William &amp; Mary, they have the same examples about not being able to put a staircase on the back of your house, not being able to put a small kitchen addition. In this instance, if you were to go ahead and to have Saluda be a National Register Historic District, it would not institute any architectural review guidelines, nor would it assume that there was a committee that would essentially implement those in any way, shape, or form. Oftentimes, what you end up seeing is a connection. Those connections are not correlated in any way. There are, I think, over 10,000 historic districts in the United States in total. They've done a study, and there's no correlation that shows that an historic district suddenly arrives, and then within two to three years, you have an Architectural Review Board. So for instance, in Gloucester County, the Downtown Historic District has been there for, I think it was done in 2008, 2009. There's no Architectural Review Board. There's no... There is an Historical Committee at the county level, but they only look at a certain subsection of properties that were zoned historic in 1976... No, 1981, when zoning started first coming in. And it doesn't include the Downtown Historic District. Same with Matthews. There are other places in Virginia that equally have historic downtowns. There are no review boards that were triggered by the downtown. Ultimately, if Matthews chose to, or if Gloucester chose to, or maybe even Saluda, or, I'm sorry, Middlesex County chose to, you could institute that. And often, this would be a good backing to develop one. But this has to be a decision by the county and its citizens, and it has to be done carefully, slowly. And just because you're on an historic district like this, there's no correlation that says the other follows in any particular... In any order or any particular period.
And beyond pride, remind me of the other advantages of having this as a historic district?
So one is... So the most tangible is incentives that are based on...
Right.
...programs provided by the state. The other one besides tax credits, because you can go... State tax credits will usually get you about 25 percent. If you qualify, federal tax credits for income-producing businesses will get you 20. So for some folks, it's a major project, like the Chamberlain Hotel or the Cavalier Hotel. These are major projects. They did both state and federal, and they got 45 percent of their certified costs back in a combination of state and tax... Federal tax credits. So obviously, huge incentive for them. Our organization did one. We just used the state tax credits on the restoration we did at the gas station. Will probably net somewhere around $120,000 after the fact on a $1.1, $1.2 million project.
Does the inventory process identify opportunities for tax credit projects? Where does... Where does one... Like, let's say I'm a bed-and-breakfast owner in Saluda, and I hadn't thought of, geez, I could get tax credits to do X. When does that idea come to me in this process? Or does this process even spur those kinds of ideas? Maybe you can step through the gas station and say, "We first became a historic district, and then that owner said, 'Hey, I've got an idea, let's refurbish this.'" How does that look?
So I've seen it happen both ways. Somebody will come up and say, "I really want to restore this cool old building." And they're like, "Well, wait, first I have to be on the National Register if I want to use the tax credit stuff." So sometimes the chicken comes first, and sometimes the egg comes first. We went into the situation with restoring the gas station where we said, "Well, luckily enough, we're already in the register... On the register as part of a district." And so we said from the beginning, "Okay, we're just going to march through this and use the program." Oftentimes, in my business, the best way is to... It's a public education campaign. It's why my nonprofit exists, is essentially to get that information out to people. And so we'll use opportunities like this to go ahead and to share that information, and then we provide our building as a litmus test. So you come to our building, you say, "Okay, well, what did you do here? What did you do there?" We can tell you about the nuts and bolts, we can open up the books. But it's public education. It's essentially kind of outreach and letting people know in the community, and that's often relying on either the contractors who are coming through to do the work to talk one-on-one with the property owner, or the county slash nonprofits that are focused on the historic integrity and the historic part of this community to kind of bring attention to it. Occasionally, the state will bring its staff down. They just did a big workshop in Matthews, and they'll go over all the different incentive programs, from easements to archaeological, public archaeology, to architectural rehabilitation tax credits. They'll go through the whole shebang. But they can only be so many places at a time. So more often than not, it's local folks who have heard about the program and word-of-mouth.
So if this was Williamsburg 60 years ago, you'd be over the moon and have 30 people in here behind you, right? Like, in other words, that would be a really exciting opportunity. Where does Saluda rank from your professional perspective? Like, what opportunities are there? Are we thinking maybe one or two things come out of this, or we don't know?
So the way I look at it is that you've got a long-term perspective. Here's an honor that opens up an opportunity. I'm working... My organization is also helping out Port Royal right now. They've been on the register since 1969, one of the first places. And you mentioned CW. Well, guess what was the fallback plan if CW didn't work out? It was Port Royal. So lots of documentation, but, you know, they also have a problem that you guys don't have here, if you can call it a problem, is that they don't have three... They have 301 going through the middle of them. You guys have a fairly pleasant downtown with not a ton of traffic, but still a lot of potential. And so I'd say, in a place like Saluda, it's perfect because it has something where I think a little bit of investment like this can lead to continued foster of pride, but also a certain way of saying, "Look, we want to keep our buildings around." And the one thing I'm worried about most in Gloucester is that the constant thriving development that we see there is going to mean that we're going to lose some of the buildings that kind of make it what it is. And so for some folks, they want to see economic development, but they also don't want to lose their identity. They were like, "Well, part of the reason I love this place is because that old place over there, and I know what happened there, and I got my hair cut over there." Not recently, but you can have some sympathy. Exactly. So I'd say that Saluda is one of the untouched resources that really deserves more appreciation. It makes you smile while you go through it. Is it CW in 1930? No. But is it beautiful and is it special in its own way? And yes, I love every snowflake, so shoot me. But it's also, I think, got a lot of great stuff in it. So you might see three or four projects that see somebody restore a building, and that might be enough to spur three or four more.
Yep.
Or it may take another 20 years for you to get the next three or four. And frankly, if this is already done, it's not like these designations expire.
Right. Last two questions for me. Do we have his contact information available to us? And do you ever see projects where something like an elevator going into a historic building to make it so that we still keep it historic but accessible to people? Are those sometimes available for tax credits?
Something tells me that other people in the crowd know what you're talking about.
I would duck if you answered that wrong.
Look, I think a good design can lead to a positive solution if this is intended to go ahead and to bring access to people who are... Find it difficult to access upper floors of things and bring greater access to the larger community. I'm all for it, and I'm one of the biggest preservationists I know. So I feel that there's a way. There's always a way. That's my opinion.
Thanks for your expertise. It really helps, because this is one of these areas where, I don't know about the rest of you, but you just can't be an expert on everything, and this is very helpful.
Well, I don't have skin in the game, meaning that if this goes forward, I'm certain that I would try to help out where I could, and my organization might bid on it. But it's not some... I would rather see it happen if I was involved or not, which means that I can basically kind of give you a little bit of my opinion. And I live relatively locally. I mean, I work in Gloucester, I live in King William, I've known this place forever. So if you guys need me for something, you just let me know. We're not that far away, especially if it has absolutely nothing to do with me. Well, then you'll get my straight, honest answer whether you like it or not. Other questions?
Is the town of Urbana...
My apologies.
Go ahead, Pete.
Is the town of Urbana already in this program?
I believe Urbana is already in the National Register. I just don't know if its boundaries match the historic towns or not. I didn't do my prep work on Urbana before I came today. I know that there's a... This building itself is already on the National Register of Historic Places, the one that we're standing in. But it doesn't go beyond the complex of the courthouse here. So... And there are other properties in the county of... In Middlesex County that are on the National Register. I think Urbana is the one district that's in the register for Middlesex County.
The entire town?
I don't know. I don't know the boundaries of it off the top of my head. Like, Port Royal just expanded its boundaries, it's caused a big problem. So people keep saying, "Is the whole town?" It's like, "Is the whole town in 2018, or the whole town in 1818?" So I would have to double-check.
You mentioned a couple of dates, like early 1800s to like 50 years ago.
Late 1800s. The building on the... As you're leaving town, heading south. There's a beautiful building on the side, Cloverleaf? Am I getting the name wrong?
Leifway?
Leifway, thank you. Has the front of it, it's, I think, 1781. So I think that might be the earliest building in the region of... Or in this area that's specified.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I set you off, I should have listened.
Well, but then you said two about 50 years ago, to 1970. So that's... Those are the properties in this area, or that you would survey?
So we would survey every property that was within a boundary.
Okay.
And so regardless of date. And then what the process involves is determining what's called a period of significance.
Okay. So that's what I'm... That period of significance, who defines that? How's that defined?
Your consultant, whoever you hired to help you write this, should have heavy involvement by your Historical Society. I suggest that above all things. If the consultant isn't willing to spend time talking to local folks about this, you do not want somebody coming in who's not going to sit down and talk with locals.
Okay. So then the focus of this, what you're talking about, is buildings and preserving buildings? I get that. But then you... There was some mention of events, and I'm thinking preserving the story. And there's a good bit of civil rights history in this area, and particularly the Irene Morgan story that I believe is within these boundaries.
The bus stop.
Right.
Yeah.
So would that be something that would be part of this, preserved as part of this, or somehow... I don't even know if there's anything to actually preserve, but would that fit into this project, that story?
Yes.
Okay.
And following up on what she just said, couldn't we take that building and move it across the road?
Okay. So first hers. So the period of significance cannot be more recent than 50 years.
Okay.
That's what the Park Service put down a long time ago to make sure that we had appropriate amount of time for us to look at the past through appropriate glasses. With some exceptions. So the things that happened immediately that we know are going to be historic and everybody agrees upon, occasionally you can get less than 50 years in the past on the register. Now, the period of significance can be more than 50 years ago. That's just as closest you can get to the present. And you can revise over time. So let's say somebody puts Saluda on today, and you have that 50-year rule in place. Well, 20 years from now, you could revise it, and you could include several buildings that survived that at the time weren't, but that in the future might be. That's what Port Royal's going through now. Their period of significance ended in like the late 19th century, and they have a lot of early 20th century buildings they'd love to see eligible for tax credits and for other things that would provide pride for that, because they had people, like famous architects and other people who lived there. So the period of significance has to stay static at the time you write the document, and it should be in consultation between expert consultants and the locality, particularly its Historical Society and learned individuals there, to kind of determine what that range is going to be. It also looks at important people, important events, archaeology, and architecture. Architecture is the most common one. It's the one that's easiest to do, costs the least amount of money. The events and the important people certainly covers the bus stop, as well as several other themes that would be important, including town planning and urban development. And the whole issue of switching the courthouse back and forth from Stormont to Saluda anyways. And then the last one, archaeology, is one that's typically understudied because the level of documentation is very intense. And since you only have to qualify by one of these four criteria, typically they leave archaeology off. But, you know, I'm an archaeologist by training, so I'm a big proponent of that, but I just acknowledge that the cost sometimes make it prohibitive in acknowledgement and extending benefits to communities is more important than me getting happy about finding broken pottery in the ground. Now, his question. Could you pick up a building and move it across the street and still have it retain its integrity? If you work with the Department of Historic Resources and do additional documentation in the process, occasionally that can work out. And occasionally, you can even do it retroactively. But the key is, is that you're not dismissing or changing the historic integrity of the property in the process. So if you take it and you put it in the middle of a shopping mall's parking lot, you're not doing so great. But like in Matthews, they allowed the Callis House to go ahead and to be moved from the back area over to the frontage, and it matched generally with the overall aesthetic of the district, so they permitted.
In the interest of time and recognizing this is, Pete, your district, first of all, there's 15 sites already in Middlesex, and Urbana Historic District is one of them. But I'd be interested in entertaining a small committee that probably wouldn't have to last long, and if you were willing to serve, since it's in your district, I'd join you. And I know of somebody in your district with a strong bend towards historic preservation who's already helping us with the Middlesex Foundation project for affordable housing. So, you know, I'd love to be able to pick your brain further as we step through this. It seems like a great idea, but it seems like we have a lot more questions, and I'd be happy to join you on a committee to explore that.
Is that...
Yes, sir. I think that'd be just fine. Do you want to name the other individual, or do you want to wait and ask them first?
I'll ask them first, I think that's a better practice.
So basically, the formation of a three-man committee to get to the crux of the questions that we've got.
To be able to recommend to the board an action or a non-action on this front?
I appreciate that, because I wasn't ready to do that today.
I think this is awesome. And I appreciate it. And a committee, but I think we need to understand this process. It's out here, other people taking advantage of it. We have a tremendous amount here that we need to utilize in ways that we haven't done. So committee's fine with me.
Well, it's not your fault, Pete, and I can tell that.
I'm used to... Whatever. But I can only share that Dr. Brown is just wonderful to work with. And the Department of Historic Resources was very excited when they came down here and did this study, and very impressed. And they've been on my back to get this off the ground. And I realize the level of understanding in this community is not great, and that's what we need to help have. So we don't look at it as a penalty or a restriction, but it actually opens up the door. You talk about Cook's Corner and the cost there. If we had a historic designation there, maybe we could get tax credits. But we have to do incremental steps. And one is understanding the process. And then...
If we did have Cook's Corner, we may run into a problem, though, taking this one building and moving it across the road.
We've got an expert now, Pete.
Yeah.
I'm happy to help.
Would that be a problem?
I need to know the specifics of the case before I can comment on it. But I know that the bus stop in particular, a good friend of mine is the historian for the National Park Service. It's a coincidence, but I just happen to know him, and he was presenting to my class the other week, and he brought that very case up, because he was part of the team that came down and was studying it here in town and said, you know, "They really need to go ahead and have a historic district." And I just told him, it's like, "I'll see what I can do."
Thank you very much.
I thank you all for the presentation, and I think you see that there is interest in moving forward with this, there's just a lot more questions that we need answers to, and we'll let the supervisor for this district head up that committee to get some answers so that we can be sure moving forward that this is what our community wants and needs.
And Mary, would you be able to contact the old building, the old school building, right? That would be something that could be put on and fixed up. I told me that old Annie House Church there, that would be on there, that'd be something that you could have funds to restore that old school building?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's it.
No, that's not, it's an example of something that was moved, but it was moved so long ago, that it fits perfectly within their system, because it's part of the history, is its move.
Right, very good. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next item of business, we were to, gotten a presentation from the mayor of Urbana, Steve Holmberg, who I understand is unable to make it, and I believe Mr. Mansfield is going to fill in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I would like to read this resolution fairly quickly. It says, "A resolution by the Urbana Town Council to request Middlesex County." Whereas the town of Urbana owns and operates a municipal water system that serves town and county residents in the vicinity of the town of Urbana, and whereas the town of Urbana has been the owner of the water system since its inception and funded repairs and maintenance to the system with the revenue generated by billing water, by billing water consumption, and whereas the town has supplied water without cost to county residents for emergency uses since the water system inception, and whereas the town of Urbana operates under the provision of the groundwater withdrawal permit issued by the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality that requires drilling a new well within eight years of issuance, and whereas the town of Urbana has proof of need to properly balance the water pressure throughout the system in order to provide consistent pressure to all customers, and whereas the town of Urbana has not previously requested assistance or support for the Urbana Water System from Middlesex County, and whereas the county of Middlesex has provided Middlesex Water Authority grant funding in the amount of $300,000, by the way, I think that's $700,000, for the establishment of water service to currently underserved and underserved citizens and businesses of Middlesex County, I was wrong on the $300,000. Whereas the county of Middlesex increased real estate and property taxes to fund the aforementioned grant funding in part, and the increased taxes have not been rescinded and are still generating funds for fiscal year 2019, and therefore be it resolved that the town of Urbana governing body on behalf of the taxpayers and citizens of Urbana and Middlesex County hereby request the county of Middlesex include $300,000 in its fiscal 2019 budget for the purpose of supporting the continued provision of drinking water services to those Middlesex County citizens currently on the Urbana Water System by supporting the cost of infrastructure maintenance and improvements to the Urbana Water System. Passed and adopted and approved this 26th day of March 2018, and it was approved unanimously by all, all of the council members and the mayor.
Mr. Mansfield may offer a couple of clarifications.
Absolutely.
Whereas on the $300,000, that was a $700,000 grant from the county to the Middlesex Water Authority. It was not to establish water service to citizens and businesses, it was for the health, safety, and welfare of 18 miles of the county to provide fire protection. This was to upsize lines and install fire hydrants. So, just want to be clear on the amounts and why the grants were made. And finally, I can't, I'm on the Water Authority and of course on the Board of Supervisors, and I cannot identify any increased real estate or personal property taxes related to this $700,000 grant. I've not been able to connect those dots. I realize it's all tax money, but I don't see an increase in either one of those taxes for that grant. And I would open the floor to discussion if somebody sees it differently.
Do we have a representative from Urbana here that wants to present beyond what Pete has said?
Yes. Bill Smith is here, and...
I got waylaid last night on this, so I'm not a public speaker, and Lord willing, I never will be.
Would you pull the microphone up to you just a little bit?
Mr. Oll, you had said that you couldn't connect the dots with that, and a Southside Sentinel article they had, where the real estate tax and the personal property tax, reconfiguration of the personal property tax would generate funds not only for the school, the rescue squad, and include the $700,000 for the fire hydrants on the MWA. That was in the Southside Sentinel. Now...
We transact that business, and I don't recall that business being transacted.
I'd like the opportunity to review the budget with Mr. Smith.
Okay.
Now, also, I did a FOIA request on a, on a proof of grant from the county to the Middlesex Water Authority, which is a separate entity from, from the county. And we all understand, and we're all for the Middlesex Water Authority to provide good drinking water to Central and Eastern Middlesex. Now, in doing so, you're taking a big swig of water there, or vodka, no. The, in doing so, and I've lost my train of thought because I saw that...
FOIA request.
FOIA request.
Oh, the FOIA request. I asked for basically proof of grant. What I found from that FOIA request is that there was no application and no approval of that grant, you know, through the normal channels. In other words, there's nothing in writing. And if there's nothing in writing, I've known in business my entire life, if it's not in writing, it didn't happen. There's no contractual obligation for MWA to use that $700,000 for fire hydrants. None whatsoever.
Can we ask...
There's nothing in writing.
Mr. Smith? Could, could we ask that Greg Chambers answer specifically?
Well, that, that would be fine, that would be fine. I'm just going, I'm just going by what the FOIA request basically told me, is that there was nothing in writing. And I know everybody says that's all for fire hydrants and everything like that, and I understand that. But, that, that $700,000 has already been moved into the MWA's checking account.
It, it has indeed, but could, could I ask that Greg step forward?
Okay, that'd be fine, but I just want to make it known, you know, that we are for the MWA providing water service down in Central and Eastern Middlesex. We're all for that.
What I'm not clear on is, is Urbana's concern a lack of transparency in the Middlesex government?
No, no, we're not. We have an infrastructure issue. Our water system is from the 1960s.
I would agree with that.
Okay? It is, we need a new well, we need to do, we need to fix our infrastructure. You know, we have to rebuild it, we want to do it in phases. We've been, we're having our system mapped at this point, so we could look at what needs to fix first. The $300,000 grant will lessen the burden on the taxpayers of Urbana, and the taxpayers of the county also, because we are taxpayers of the county and Urbana. It will lessen the burden and help us get moving on building and re, I would, I would say, upgrading our infrastructure on something right now that's basically 57 or 60 years old.
So, I guess I would push back a little bit, Mr. Smith, when, when this Board of Supervisors, before I joined it, formed the Middlesex Water Authority, the intent was, and correct me if I'm wrong, any of you who were here, for them to be self-sufficient. In other words, they're not going to be coming back to the county asking for maintenance dollars, 60 years hence, two years hence, five years hence. So when they decided to create a Middlesex Water Authority, they did so in an effort to provide water in areas where there was not water service. So you could think of Urbana as a separate water authority who's already invested in their system. The question now becomes perhaps where you're getting funds to run your system is inadequate, but I don't think the first place you should look is Middlesex County, I think it would be the ratepayers who are buying water at an excessively low rate.
Well, we're looking at that also, but at the same time, when, when Urbana started their water system, Urbana paid for everything through the inception. Middlesex Water Authority, they're getting a $700,000 grant. We're just, we're just...
For fire protection.
Sir, what you have to realize is, and I've served on the Water Authority, we, we wanted to bring good, clean water to the people that needed it, and we're running a pipe 18 miles. Understood. And we scratched our heads and went, wait a minute, what about fire protection? Well, that comes at a big cost, because the lines have to be this big now, instead of this big, and those big iron things with the valves on top that the fire engines hook up to are expensive along with their maintenance. Understood. This is for health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Middlesex County. This is not helping to deliver clean water to people that need it in the eastern, southern, central. And all we're asking for is fair and equal treatment on our water system, on our infrastructure of our water system, in the town of Urbana. We are taxpayers in the county also. Understood. And I, and I think we need to be treated as such. We've never asked for, for money from the county for our water system, it has been self-sustaining. But, over time, we need some, we need some money, we have to drill a well, we want to phase in our, rebuilding our infrastructure in there for the years to come.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the, is the assistance being requested for drinking water or for fire protection?
Both. Infrastructure, complete infrastructure.
So it's exclusively for infrastructure?
That's my understanding, yes.
Please, Mr. Chambers is chairman of the Middlesex Water Authority.
Greg Chambers. Bill Smith. Nice to meet you. My first boss was Bill Smith. There's probably more than one. I, I just wanted to clarify a few things as to, you know, I've been trying to have a dialogue with, with the town of Urbana relative to, to our water systems operating for, for quite some time, that's been a hard thing to make, make happen, I am still very open to that. I want to talk a little bit though, about the grant process, if you will. This was discussed in one of our MWA meetings back when Carlton was in that chair and I was in that chair, a while back, okay? At that point in time, we were struggling to meet our primary mission, which was to start a business with an $18 million capital cost with zero upfront capital from anyone, okay? To a customer list that included 500 people that were going to start paying us in three years. If anybody's ever tried to start a business under that set of terms, it's not easy, okay? So, we were looking very, very hard at every line in our budget, for how do we minimize the capital cost of this project, okay? And I made, in that chair, in a public meeting, the statement that $700,000 of our budget was going to a public safety issue for the good of the county, rather than simply providing water to the 500 citizens that we intended to have sign up to our system. And I questioned the wisdom of that expenditure for the fire hydrant, because my fear at the time was if we didn't reduce our capital cost, nobody would have water, okay? We failed to do this once because of a high capital cost, and we were working to, to minimize that a second time. That is the genesis of, of this grant, if you will. I didn't think of it as a grant, I thought of it as a request from the county that, that I passed on to the supervisors that were in attendance at that time, and, and things got where they are. Quite frankly, I have a bad habit of not moving the microphone to where I'm always heard in a public meeting, and we haven't found the record where I made that request. The main thing I wanted to say here is, I'm the guy that said it, it was entirely my intention to use 100% of that $700,000 to fund fire hydrants along the route of the pipeline, it is still my intention. I want to promise the Board of Supervisors that that's how that $700,000 will be spent in, in the course of our project going forward. Further, you know, I thought, sitting in that chair, that I should ask for another million, because as Chip said, we have to up the, the sizes of the pipeline. But I personally believe that it's in the best interest of the county overall for us to upsize our pipes, so that as new residences are built, as businesses move to Middlesex, as capacity demands increase, I'm not going to be laying down two eight-inch pipes next to one another, but we'll do a 12-inch pipe right now, it'll meet our demands for fire protection and prepare us for growth in the future of the, of the county. So that's the history, how we got here, what we asked for, and how we got to today, okay? I want to stress that I've had a little bit of understanding from what I've read in the paper, and some conversations I've had about some of the infrastructure challenges in the town of Urbana, okay? I want to stress that as the Water Authority for the county of Middlesex, not for the route from Rosegill to Deltaville, but for the county of Middlesex, we need to be thinking about where we go next. And the obvious place to go next is the other end of the county, and, and Urbana is right on the path, right across the bridge. So, I genuinely strongly feel that before we talk about any expenditures of any sort, we should have dialogue on how do we work together to serve more people and minimize the cost to the Water Authority, to the town of Urbana, to the county, to better serve the people of the county, provide fire protection that's better than we have right now, and, and keep rates as low as possible for everyone in the county.
Thank you, Greg. I, I wasn't aware of the fact that we didn't get recorded in what you asked for on the $700,000, but I think we are pretty well documented from the Board of Supervisors as to where that $700,000 was going. And unless and until this system is deployed, and we as the Water Authority haven't put the fire, the fire hydrants where we said we were, unless and until that happens, there is no problem here. There's no issue.
I, I just wanted to make sure that it was in the record.
Thank you, Greg, and you were filmed there, so that's almost as good as being down on paper, but I'm going to go back to a pony that may have worked earlier in this meeting. If I may, Pete, I'd like to suggest that we form a committee, and if the good people of Urbana will recognize our intent to work with them, I think it's more appropriate that we start talking to them about what our authority, our existing Middlesex Water Authority, who's independent, is doing in the county, and we look at the issues that's facing Urbana, because Urbana is a valued asset in this community, and you are taxpayers here, and we respect that. I just think coming here with a $300,000 ask is putting the cart before the horse. We'd like to know more about what your needs are, we'd like to assess whether potentially a well is the right use of funds, when there's going to be wells that we're, we're already using right next door to Urbana, there's, there's all kinds of other things that we might consider before we come with a carte blanche $300,000 infrastructure check. And I, and I will be honest with you, I run the Water and Sewer Committee at the Coves at Wilton Creek, it's not 472 users, but we're, you know, 200, 150, depending on the time of year. And I've learned a lot about running a water system, I've learned a lot about raising rates, and how people don't talk to you in your community, it's difficult, but sometimes it's appropriate. And I, to me, it's painfully obvious that your water rates are entirely too low, and that's why you find yourself in this predicament. But if Pete will have me, and if you people will trust my goodwill and my intent here, I think we should form a committee, sit down with you folks, find out what your needs are, see where the county is appropriate to help, see if Middlesex Water Authority has some additional grant funding that they might be able to access to help us leverage outside USDA funds or other funds than these people's tax money. But we have a lot of moving parts, we're not ready to throw $300,000 anywhere, but we need to sit down and talk, and if you'd be interested in that, I'd be happy to join.
I, I'm, some way I don't think that I'm the person to be talking to at this moment. However, I, I would love to do it, I would like, one caveat, because I'd kind of like Greg to...
You'll have a hard time keeping me out of it.
Does that seem, Mr. Smith, to you like a good, you know, maybe you thought we would pass a resolution to dispense $300,000?
Didn't think one way or the other.
Okay, well, but I, I guess what I'm looking for is, is a solution where in a small community, we as small community people can just come together and really get everything out on the table, find out where everybody's coming from, see who needs help from who, see where it makes sense, and we all have constituents we have to respond to, you know, your elected officials there, and Urbana have theirs, and they're even closer, you know, in that tight little town than we are in this tight little county. But I just, I hope you see what, what, what I'm trying to do here is, is bring us all to the table, let's get it out there, let's find out what we can do.
Let's do it as soon as possible.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, let's do it as soon, as soon as possible, because we have a, a unique opportunity. We have USDA funding that we're about to put out to bid in six months or so, okay? You know, that we have a grant of X dollars if our bids come in less than X, and any projects that we add meet the constraints of our USDA funding source, that's key. It has to be under the USDA guidelines. We can do other things.
Yep.
You know, they, they have to result in water coming out of somebody's kitchen tap, you know, they, it has...
So fire suppression doesn't fall back?
Fire suppression by itself, I am pretty sure, would not make it through the USDA process.
And the only reason I ask, ask Greg is, and I don't have great details on the Urbana Water System, I've, I've got a lot of hearsay, but I, I am concerned about the fire suppression in Urbana, I, I don't know the exact issues, but that's part of why I want to be on this committee. We've had fires in that town, and, and we need to be able to respond to them, and I want to be a part of helping us as a community come together and figure out how we can get everybody where, where these new Middlesex Water Authority customers are going to be with fire suppression.
We're in the process right now, I think it's with the Thrasher Group, to map our system.
When, when will that be? Have you any idea when, when that will be complete?
We gave a motion to support Holly to go ahead and get that started, that at the same meeting the resolution was done. So, March 26th, she probably has got the ball rolling right now, I have no idea when it will be done.
How long it will take?
But it, you know, we, we, they know that we want it as soon as possible. We want to know what we have, because basically what we're looking at is everyone that's there on the council, the mayor, you know, most of the residents... mayor, you know, most of the residents, they weren't here when the water system was put in.
Will you be the ambassador that goes back and really pushes?
It seems that, you know, remember I told you about the Navy?
Yes, sir.
Volunteer yourself. It seems that I get volunteered everywhere, so...
Well, you're retired, so you can.
No, we really want to be involved in any way that we can be helped.
I will plan on it.
And I...
I do have to say this, that it is the town council and the mayor and the town, too, we want to remain as an independent water system, okay?
I think most of us understood that.
I want that.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, as a county and just one supervisor, I have no desire to come into that system in its current state and have any part of it.
Me either.
I think you heard a unanimous acknowledgement of that, so can't get any more official than that. May I add one quick thing, Mr. Smith?
How quick, sir?
Well, very quick. Mr. Smith, you work on a committee formed of citizens that are up in town council?
I'm chairman of the Water Committee. We have two council members and the town administrator.
Is that the committee that you would want our liaison members to kind of meld with?
Correct.
Very good, okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Gentlemen, thank you, and I'm glad that something positive appears to be... I hope this is my last public speaking. I sort of felt like when I read that resolution that the sabers were drawn and we were going to have to either fight or defend ourselves. I'm glad that that is not the result of this meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith goes to Saluda.
I have a request from the county attorney that we take a five-minute break between now and the county administrator comments, and I would ask, please, please, please make it five, because if you get longer than we get longer, we don't get a chance to get done before the next meeting. I'm sort of one of these people. He eats on time.
My first one was talking, thinking about Merck's Law, and then I asked him to do a lot of things. And he did, and I said, "It's like cash."
Oh, my gosh, I need some water.
You got it faster than I do.
I need water.
All right. Moving right along.
Mr. Chairman?
The county attorney updates.
I do not have any at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, my goodness. That must mean that the county administrator doesn't have anything either.
I have one thing, Mr. Chairman.
I gave him some of my time.
Want to give the board an update. Of course, we have been working on the Cooks Corner water, excuse me, the Cooks Corner redevelopment project, which I think in your packet, you have a sample of the new logo. I believe that's in your packet. Now, I'll pull that up if I may. Get off of this. Get down to it. There it is. Cooks Corner Revitalization.
I'd like to commend staff on this logo, I think, and I think Kevin Gentry or...
I had nothing to do with it.
I know, I know you didn't, but whoever did, I'd like to commend them. I think this is very nice artwork.
Michelle Brown, I think, did it, and she named it too, which is a good thing, because I have a bad habit of naming things wrong.
I think Kevin Gentry had a hand in it.
Kevin, too, yes, sir. With that, with the Cooks Corner Revitalization Project, a subject has developed regarding the existing bus garage and the potential replacement or relocation of that structure. Jim Goforth has reached out to me. Of course, Jim's on the school board. He's advised us on the committee that the school board does want to have a substantial hand in the final location of the building, but they're very keen on the idea of starting work with us on determining where that location can be. Now, Jim has his preferences of locations, and so do I. Not too mutually exclusive, but we thought it may be beneficial to have a board member work with, maybe Jim, myself, and Dr. Gretz, on working through the relocation of the current cinder block building or relocation of the school bus garage to another site. There are basically three different potential sites in the Cooks Corner area, two of which are on school board property, and I think one's on the county property, depending. One of the things I wanted to ask the board for, if it's the board's pleasure, John is currently on the foundation board, he may be an option. Of course, Wayne is very familiar with the school bus garage, and he's also our economic development rep. But if we could have a board member volunteer to kind of work in a working group with Jim Goforth to try to come up with the new location for the bus garage, I think that would be meaningful input and would help staff.
I believe that John Coombs has affirmatively responded. I see Wayne's feelings of hurt.
No, I'm not, I'm fine.
He's like crazy Ricky.
All right, well, John, I appreciate your willingness to step off and...
We'll begin working with Jim Goforth over the next several weeks to try to pin down a location. We were shortlisted on the grant, as you may have read in my report. I won't reiterate everything that's in my report. We are very confident that we had a very successful presentation and site visit the other day from, I think there were as many of them in the room as there were of us, probably about 13 officials from the state, 10 to 13. In any event, we were one of three selected for site visits. And, well, we have a feeling we're on the shortlist, so when we know more, we'll tell you. That was all I had, Mr. Chairman.
All right, sir, and we will move on to unfinished business, and I'll start all the way on my left, Mr. Mansfield, if he has any unfinished business.
Well, yeah, that's not in my report.
Just don't let him forget that, because he's doing it.
No, no. Mr. Jesse.
Hello.
Mr. Coombs.
I'm out.
Ms. Wyonar.
Yes, sir.
In reverse order, new business. Ms. Wyonar. Mr. Coombs.
I have none.
I have none. Mr. Jesse. Ms. Mansfield.
New business.
New business.
No.
That's a no, okay. Then we've got budget to public hearing tentative, depending on work session outcome, setting another work session. Are we adding another work session?
I think the board was set on a consensus to send the budget to public hearing, and I can recap that for you now if you'd like.
If you would.
I will, I will indeed. The board completed work session processes on the budget today, and we have drafted a budget of $26,247,665 of expenses and revenues. Key driving revenue factors, we advertising a tax increase to real estate of five cents to a rate of 61 from a current rate of 56. Tax increase proposed to personal property of 40 cents on PPTRA qualified items and classifications from $1.65 to $2.05. Proposed is to remove the assessment ratio from airplanes and increase taxes on airplanes to 2.05 per 100, personal property classification of airplanes. And that, I wish the airport committee reps were here. That request actually came from the airport committee, several of the airport committees. We will be advertising a BEEPole ordinance modification with various rate increases and caps, and that's something the board may want to send to public hearing today in order to meet our advertisement deadlines for the May 1st meeting.
Just to clarify, increases, we looked at the area and went for the mean over there. We're not going to be high, not going to be low.
And I will go over that after we send the budget to public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Just for the sake of those here today, so they can read that as a...
This budget contains a new tax and a transient occupancy tax, and that ordinance is going to public hearing tonight. And that's the major movers of revenue, major movers for expenditures, overall 7% increase in compensation for county staff and schools. Of course, the school ask of $9.784,852 was the request from the schools. School debt service, their request was actually $1,888,000, but we had some modifications to the school's debt service and the counties and how we were sharing and reporting the 2017 refi that actively lowered our amounts on both categories. And that brings us to revenues and expenditures equalling $26,246,65. One other note, and of course, there'll be substantially more at the presentation on the budget. This budget does advertise for slightly more revenue than what is needed to meet expenditures to the tune of about $200,000 of additional revenue, which is, until the board makes final decision on their tax rates and possibly, potentially rebalancing some of the taxes at question, that money resides in non-departmental expenditures in the contingency account. As the board is aware, and the public may be aware, the board can advertise a budget higher with tax rates higher than what's needed, and you can always come down on the tax rates. You can't go up on the tax rates after the public hearing. This budget does do that. So, there may be some movement on the tax rates or some further rebalancing of certain tax categories.
May I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I heard, again, today in our public comment, the number 35 cents per $100 in real estate tax is something that was our situation here in the county recently. I view that as cherry picking, so I want to cherry pick a number of my own. When I graduated high school in 1995, we were paying 63 cents per $100 in this county. So, if you just pick one number, you can find all kinds of stories, and I just want us to be clear that furthermore, at 61 cents per $100, it's a raise, and it's a consecutive raise. It's a decade of raising taxes here. But we are still at a place where if we were a state, we would be 47th or 48th out of 50 in terms of what we're taxing. And you can make an argument that the other counties around us are similarly low, but it's my contention that a lot of thought and effort and consult has gone into this budget to get it to its current state, and it's not going to please everyone, but I think we are just coming onto the radar in terms of being on the map of where people pay property taxes. And I don't want to have higher property taxes more than anybody else, but I think we've really thought through this, and I've exposed myself to the community, and, you know, like I said, there's going to be some people that disagree, but we do have to look at the historical numbers in context, and to look at 2008, 2009, 35 cents, you put that in the perspective of '95 at 63, there's more of a story there. And that's where else, that's my point.
Thank you, sir. Does that bring us to supervisor comments and reports?
Well, there's one other item, Mr. Chairman. You will need to authorize the budget to public hearing, and we will develop the ad and get it in the paper next week to meet our advertisement deadlines.
So, moved? Second? All in favor? Aye. Pose same sign.
April 19th, and they will potentially approve the budget on the 26th. They can make alterations, modifications to the budget, as long as they don't go higher on the taxes.
Is there also a consensus to send BEEPole to the public hearing? Is there also a consensus?
I would move that we send BEEPole to the public hearing as well.
That would be for your May, okay?
Motion, second?
Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose same sign.
Okay, well, that was all I needed to make.
That's good, Matthew.
That's it, thank you.
All right, let's start with Mr. Mansfield on his supervisor's comments and reports.
Okay.
Or you didn't tell them.
John, Mr. Coombs, and I did visit with West Rock Paper Mill, where we met three members of their environmental team on March 21st to discuss water use of the West Point plant, specifically the water draw from Potomac Act. In short, they reported that they had already spent $4 million that they had promised, which I was happy to hear since spending this $4 million was the center of my frontload plan. However, that was the end of the good news. Instead of dropping their withdrawals to 16 million gallons per day, they were only able to obtain 17.8 million gallons per day. And while they promised that they would work to get down to 16, as is required in their current 10-year permit, they were not optimistic that they could drop below this number in the future, a requirement for a sustainable act for. John and I suggested that ultimately, they should pump from one of the two bordering rivers. West Point, West Rock's response was that the James River County supposedly pumping from the Chickahominy was costing $129 million for an RO system, which West Rock could not come close to affording. I believe that our effort to protect the Potomac Act that Dave Taylor, Director of DEQ, said would lose its potable water in 25 to 50 years at the current rate of withdrawal lays with the proposed HRSD's regeneration and injection of wastewater at a rate of 100 million gallons per day. I am making a suggestion at this time that we get in a conversation with HRSD and find out where they are, how optimistic it looks, their project looks, because that appears to be the way that we can make a impact on the Potomac Act, which probably none of us in all of this room will live to see the day when we lose water, but we owe it to our kids and their kids to make certain that we don't lose this major supply of water for Eastern Virginia. End of first, but I've got two more.
Mr. Mansfield, I could ask a question. The Department of Environmental Quality, I think, is sort of in charge of who gets to pull what water when and how.
You're absolutely correct, and one of the points that John and I made was there is an actual requirement that we, the people, get to draw before industry or agriculture. There is no question where water should be first sent. But I don't really think that, and I don't want to bad, well, I do want a bad mouth, DEQ. DEQ, if West Point asks for 25 million gallons per day, they'll get it two weeks later. We ask to re-energize two wells to pump water to the Deltaville area and all along that path, obviously for human consumption. And I think we've gone through more crap than West Point.
Let's go back to a question of responsibility and standing, because I don't think anybody in this room doesn't appreciate what you have done and the interest you've taken in protecting that act. Goes without question, but I'm unclear as to exactly what Middlesex County can do, and that's, forget all the other stuff we've got going on, what Middlesex County can do either to affect the Paper Mill's opinion of what they ought to do or to affect the regulatory agency's desire to further regulate them. And that's where I'm lost, so...
You know, I appreciate that, Chip. There's not a hell of a lot we can do, but to do nothing is even worse. We do what we possibly can, and as long as, we should keep the pressure on HRSD, because they made the statement that they can not only keep a, probably generate 100 million gallons per day, which would put us all in good shape for many, many years to come, but at the same time, help clean up the bays. Three milligrams per liter nitrogen and three milligrams per liter, one milligram, I think it is, phosphorus.
How would you like to see us as a board and a county moving forward?
I'd like us to give HRSD a call and ask if they might give us a rundown on where they stand and where they think they're going.
And if I, can I jump in, Pete, real quick?
Yeah, you were there.
I was honestly a bit skeptical about what we could accomplish in that meeting, but I was happy to take it. And I was pleased that their $4 million had led to a 17.8 million gallons a day rate. I was also displeased that we're not at 16 yet, just like you are. But what encouraged me is they sent out three of... But what encouraged me is they sent out three of their people, one from Richmond. They took us seriously in that context, and they know that we know what we're talking about, and they know that we're watching them. And their business decisions, I believe, are calculated based on how many of those meetings they have to take, because they're going to take them. And if we can join together with other counties in this aquifer and encourage them to apply similar pressure, it may not look like much right now, but it will be relevant as communities like mine at the Coves, over, once we get over 50 users tying into that system and we have to go back for a new application, we have to spend 20, $30,000, that goes to my ratepayers, and they come after my head, and I say, "Well, it's because VDH is making us conserve the hell out of our water. Oh, by the way, there's a plant over here using 17.8 million gallons a day. We use 3 million a year." So the pressure is coming. You're early, and I'm joining you, and that's part of what I think is encouraging, is the early adopter always looks crazy until everybody's doing it.
And I hope I don't look too crazy, though.
I'm joining you either way.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much.
All right. You said you had more than one item.
I've got two more, but they're brief. I visited Dawswell Home of Secretariat, the Triple Crown Horse Race Racer, for our quarterly meeting of Rappahannock River Basin Commission meeting. Briefly, Delegate Hodges reported on his stormwater and dredging bills, i.e. house bills 1092 and 508. We need to obtain copies of these bills and determine if they coincide with Middlesex County's needs. If not, we should ask for a meeting with Delegate Hodges. The RRBC, which is Rappahannock River Basin Commission, is scheduling their next meeting June 20th in Middlesex. I have promised to help find a meeting place, and my first idea is possibly the Delta Ville Maritime Museum. I would like to ask Betty to help.
What was the date again, Pete?
June 20th. This is totally Pete Mansfield. I've got no approval from anybody else for this next one. Facebook, probably all of us are aware of the current problems with Facebook and other social media. Also, at the VACO Chairman's Conference, it was reported that one county or city supervisor had written his opinion on a governmental matter which was responded to by a citizen in the form of a lawsuit against his agency, county or city, whichever it was. I would like to ask our attorney to draft a short disclaimer that says, for all practical purposes, that the views expressed reflect the personal views of the author and not necessarily the position of Middlesex County. If we agree, by the way, I obviously agree.
Mr. Chairman, you're looking to me, so you're looking for response.
Well, I guess I'm just, we're all individuals, and I don't ever speak for any more than myself or myself and my family, so I hear you. I was at the same institute, and I heard that, and I know there are, there are ways to get in trouble all the time. I'm just wondering if this is...
There's just more to it than that. These are multiple cases. The courts came down with different rulings on each, well, two of the cases, then one. It completely did a 180. If this is an issue that the majority of the board would like me to research, I can look into it. However, it's something that would need to be researched. I'm hesitant to leave this board to believe that we can give a blanket disclaimer and protect you. That's not really how the First Amendment will work. So you're political figures. This is a very cutting-edge area in the courts. Again, if it's the will of the majority of this board, I'll be happy to research this for you and to look into this further, but...
Well, I'm comfortable that I won't say or do anything personally that people take as being the official county position. So I hear, I heard the same things that Pete did, but I'm sort of thinking maybe just take this under advisement at this particular point in time and see how these cases progress and see if we think that we have a potential problem here, because certainly somebody else did. And even after hearing the presentation, I'm not sure what all they said and did that caused.
Chip, one? I don't think, people didn't crowd around me and pat me on the back. I was pretty close to the only person there that felt that something, some disclaimer should be written, and, but I still feel that way.
I fully understand. I understood the problem and I understand your position, but we do have First Amendment rights and...
But this doesn't violate your First Amendment rights by any means.
If I may interject, Mr. Chairman, I think the thing, and it's, it's just, this is a complicated area, Mr. Mansfield. You heard the VACO, that attorney get up and talk to you about the responsible cases. The courts have kind of taken different views. If this is something of interest, again, I'm more than happy to research it, and I can do a work on this and give this information to the board. I think it's going to come down to more, how are you holding yourself out on social media? Are you Pete Mansfield Board Supervisor Facebook page, or are you Pete Mansfield grandfather exchanging pictures about his grandkids personally and privately? There's a very clear distinction there. If you're interested in us having a disclaimer for any county-related, I believe the county has a Facebook page, but I believe that's something Michelle Brown works on.
Michelle, Kevin, and Glenn.
Yeah. If that's something, that would be, again, the board could give me direction, and I can research, and we can work on.
If I may?
Sure.
I think this is an issue that bears monitoring, and maybe that's what we ask council to do. I'm more concerned with our staff being overworked this year, and, you know, this is important, but I think what I'm hearing council say is we need to see more information as these suits come out, and then there may be a more appropriate time in the future to take another look at this, and I think if you could potentially just stay abreast of the issue but not go into great detail, taking time off your desk just now, that would be my preference, and then let's see what happens over time.
Is that satisfactory to you, Mr. Mansfield?
Sure.
Okay. Do we have a general consensus that the best thing is just to kind of watch and see, and if something pops up, we'll certainly address it, and maybe somebody else will get some of this homework done for us?
Yeah, I would agree that, you know, in terms of investing time to, but there's also reminders that in the board's policy and procedures, it makes pretty clear who is supposed to speak for the board, and if you're speaking on your own. And I think it's just a good reminder, though, to be cognizant of that, no matter which forum we're using. Sometimes the idea of social media sites, there's confusion over whether it's private and public, and I think that's when people get into trouble. And so, you know, from my view, anything I say that has my name on it is public, you know? I mean, so I have to be cognizant of my responsibility to do it appropriately, you know, and not speak for the board.
So we have a consensus to watch and see?
Yep.
And does that conclude your comments, Mr. Mansfield?
That's it.
Mr. Jesse?
Yeah, I did tend to revolve these in the Chris Corn complex, like Matt said, was very well attended. Chip had some good talking points, and Michelle relaxed on the job, and then we just toured, you know, the places that were around in that area. And I think I feel pretty good about them, out of 10, you know, like Matt said, we were like three that were picked that they viewed.
They wouldn't tell us three specifically, but they said significantly lasted.
Right, right, but it was three, and I just hope that, you know, we get that grant money. That was the only one I was able to attend.
All right. Well, let's see. John and I had a Budget and Finance Committee meeting with the schools. Water Authority had a meeting this last month. I attended John Coontz's Town Hall meeting in Delta Ville on the taxes. Mr. Mansfield and I also met with Ed Spivey of Kaufman and Cannolis. Is that correct?
Kaufman and Cannolis, excuse me.
Dealing with this...
But they like it when you say that.
For lack of a better term, of the class action on the opioid crisis, and the jury's still out on, we're giving that some study. We kind of need to find out what our, what our possible recapture is as opposed to what our exposure is if the suit doesn't work out. So we're just sort of, sort of rebalancing that at the time. Matt just sort of glossed over this, this vibrant communities thing, and that we had a good meeting. He failed to say we had two dress rehearsals prior to that, so I attended three meetings on this vibrant communities initiative, including the grant request, so that...
I thought we were, John would be covering some of it.
It went real well. It wasn't by accident.
Right.
Okay. Just want to be clear on that. And we also had a, an airport committee meeting this past quarter. I had been asked to sort of poll the board and see, the Rotary Club is having a...
Pride of Middlesex.
Pride of Middlesex, which honors some person, place, or thing, and this year it's the YMCA. In some years past, the county has purchased a table, and in some years past, we've gone as individuals, and the request has been made that we consider purchasing a county table for this event. So I will leave this open to my fellow supervisors as to what their desires are.
Judy and I are going to go one way or the other.
I have no problem if you get the table.
Have no problem getting the table?
I'd be happy to chip in on the table, but I have to be out of town that day, so I wouldn't be able to attend.
And I'm a recusing Rotarian.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that there is support for the county to purchase a table, maybe not enough people to fill it?
What date is it?
April 14th.
I'm not going to be able to attend it anyway, April 14th.
That is a bit of an issue if we purchase a table and don't have enough people to fill it.
Right. I don't know if we're going to be able to attend either, but we'll try.
I think I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to make it a county government table and sort of pursue all the county employees, instead of Board of Supervisors, county government.
That's a good idea.
Because I think there's a fair amount of county employees that use the YMCA that would be...
If there are spots that board members don't fill, we usually go down the...
Well, I wouldn't call it down. We move over across others.
That's a better, better put.
All right. In that case, do we have a motion for the county to sponsor one table at the Pride of Middlesex Rotary Meeting on the YMCA?
That's a $400 expense.
$400 expense.
And John, you're recusing yourself.
I am. I just don't think it's appropriate for me to whip this any further.
The chair will entertain a motion on that subject.
I'll make the motion, but I'm not sure that it's ethical for me to make the motion since I'm going to take advantage of it.
Are you a member of the Rotary?
No, he's going to sit at the table.
I'm going to sit at the table.
I don't think that's... I mean, I thought that's what the motion was for, to purchase a table.
For county employees to...
For the board and/or county employees.
I will, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion? Need a second?
A second.
Second to motion? Is there any further discussion on the motion to purchase a table for the county? And this would be from supervisors through staff and anybody that was interested with a, and I will say this with a real emphasis to make sure that we use up all those chairs, because if we, if something happens, oh, if somebody didn't go, I'll feel differently about it next year if we don't have a full compliments for the table, so...
The only reason I can't commit now is I don't know what Christie's schedule has for Madison and Collin's.
I don't know what my boss has me doing either, so... We have a motion due second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? So ordered. Mr. Coontz.
I'm sorry.
I believe that brings to your supervisor comments.
Yep. I did two town halls that you've heard about. I also did something that I would encourage each of you to consider doing in the future. I went to Middlesex High School's Career Day. They really tried to encourage members of the community that are hiring out of high school to come in and do a career day. Middlesex Elementary School had a similar day, and they asked me to speak on solar power there. I also spoke at the high school to the students about the importance of them, our major investment, considering Middlesex County as a place to stay and grow a family, maybe start a business, work, and that was a very good interaction with the school, and I would encourage other supervisors to spend more time in our single biggest line item investment, our schools. Budget and finance meetings. I toured Hummel Airfield. I did the West Rock Lunch with Pete. We had appointee meetings, and I can say I'm very pleased to have Kathy sitting next to us on the board, and it was an interesting and efficient process, but there were some meetings there that I had to attend to get to know some of the candidates. I met with Department of Social Services Rebecca Morgan about funding block grant versus fee for service and what other programs might be impacted one way or the other. Did a similar meeting with Rosabeth Kissman at the YMCA. Obviously, we all attended the meeting where the extension services and Farm Bureau spoke on land use. That was very informative and I think a good use of our time and some of our local experts to get us a little further along on understanding that huge subsidy in our county. I've had broadband discussions with Eastern Shore of Virginia Broadband Authority. I thought of them as a fairly similar locale in that they're a long isthmus or peninsula just as we are, and they're 10 years into their broadband, so I've been consulting some others that might have input on how we step through this, lessons learned. Another one on that front was the Community Broadband Networks Initiative, which is a non-for-profit that helps advise municipalities as they're stepping through this, which isn't to say I'm not going to be using the CIT in my capacity on the broadband authority. It's just to say I am starting at zero and trying to learn as much as I can from every source I can. I also have three to four commitments of people who are willing to come to a broadband authority meeting and consider joining us in some capacity, whether they're board members, advisors, concerned citizens, but I'd really like to continue to push on the broadband. I think that's a huge infrastructure development for our county, and I'm taking it very seriously. I also went with Kathy and Matt and Betty to VACO's new supervisor training, at least the first day. I was at one of, one or two of the Middlesex Foundation meetings, and I've been as supportive and excited about our progress on the Vibrant Community Grant and the Industrial Revitalization Grant, and maybe even some tax credits for a preserved historic area, if that's something that can come to pass to help on that. I met individually with constituents and business owners on the budget beyond my town halls. I felt it important to make myself available to those that are going to be impacted, and, you know, those were very helpful conversations for me as a neophyte government official. And then I have a couple questions, if I may, of the county administrator. Is there a way that we can get Keith Hodges to commit to getting us on the agenda next year in that session to 5% transient tax?
Absolutely.
I think if we hit him now, if we haven't already, we should.
I don't want to be so bold, but I think he already is.
Good enough.
I think when he couldn't make this deadline, he intends to make it next time, but we'll put that in the term, in form of a request.
And I think that was really our problem, because the legislators are pretty well limited as to how many pieces of legislation they can individually introduce.
And when the board decided to ask, it was already after the deadline.
And a similar line, I think, you know, we have a pretty unique circumstance or fortunate circumstance in that our representative lives in our county. Is it possible that the administration would ask Keith to give us an update when appropriate after the session's over, to come and tell us what he thought were the successes and failures of the session?
Absolutely.
And what opportunities we should be taking advantage of as a county? You know, to hear from our own representative and be, you know, just, to me, it makes sense for us to be on his same page.
Absolutely, and we've had similar presentations from our congressman, Rob Whitman. I'd have to get on their kind of a timeframe, but we'll make that request as well.
I would love for our representatives to know that we're expecting that from them, and if they tell us they're six months out like Rob Whitman, so be it. You know, we've got a lot of things to do between now and six months from now, and we'll happily entertain, I would think, you know, their updates on what's going on at the federal and state level. And then finally, I apologize, but I have a commitment at 6:00 and 7:00. I will not be able to make the public hearing. One of them is important to me. It's my constituents came to me about a dog ordinance. Hopefully, you've read in the board packet, at least one member in my community who has written a letter against the ordinance. I can tell you, I've worked with Gordon in my community, and I have not seen him come out for anything, so I would just ask you to consider that context. You also have seen two letters from people strongly in support, and I'm sure John Galloway is going to be here at 7:00 to, again, remind you why the dog attacks he experienced and some of the dog attacks we've seen in our neighborhood require us to take an action that essentially amounts to us doing the same thing in another community's already done. I regret that I can't be here at 7:00, but know that I'm supportive of my neighbors and their ask, and my community also wrote, the Board of Directors at the Coves at Wilton Creek also wrote a letter to the community in support of this, and I can promise you, you know, he collected, John Galloway collected signatures in a community where most of us live part-time in the community. A lot of them are still in Florida, and he still came... A lot of them are still in Florida, and he still came up with a significant amount of signatures. So I apologize for not being able to be here, but don't take that as I'm not supportive of the ordinance. It's just that I've got a day job that I've put off for too long today.
Question, John. You, you mentioned a lot of people in Florida and the timeliness of this coming up in the wintertime. How many signatures are on, you got how many homes over there?
There's 46 single-family homes, and there are 62 condo owners.
And what's the number of signatures?
27 individual signatures.
And we do have a letter that I think was, was faxed or emailed from the Association President.
To be clear, I'm on that Board of Directors. But yes, we, we voted to provide a letter to the Board of Supervisors expressing support for the ordinance in our community. And the thinking on the Board of Directors part, if I may be so bold, is to try to represent the Board of Directors, even though not on Facebook. What they're, what they're trying to say is, when John Galloway and others have had dog attacks, they've come to our community leadership, the Board of Directors. And the Board of Directors has sort of said, what can we do about it? And John Galloway in particular got fed up because he was harmed. His dog was, was harmed. We've had people break bones because dogs have jumped up on them, and they've been knocked down, bruised, hurt. And he basically said, well, if my community's not gonna do anything and say that the bylaws in our, in our little community aren't adequate, I'd like to go up to the next level. And that's why he took it to the supervisors' level. So my point is, I'm supportive, but I have a previous engagement, so don't, don't misre, don't misunderstand why I'm not here. Thank you.
Do we have a copy of that petition? Has that been provided? Do you know?
It was, but I've since lost it.
Okay.
Oh, Mr. Chairman. I did attend the Association of Counties' Speaker Supervisor's Forum, which was very helpful in getting our background. And I've also attended a number of briefings on the budget and tax issues and revenue issues to get up to speed and have done that touring around. No committee meetings yet.
Yet. All righty then. Matthew, do we have any other business?
I just had one quick question. I've took, taken the liberty of texting the museum staff to find out if there's availability on the 20th. Pete, I got a question. Does Rep. River Basin normally pay for their meetings, or do they want them for free?
You know, I'm sorry, I can't answer that. I was going to call him and find that out.
Okay. Because if they're looking for, yeah, if we could, that's what they're asking.
They were here.
At Christ Church.
Christ Church. I doubt they paid for Christ Church, but it would be more likely you'd pay at the Deltaville Maritime.
We'll, we'll get together off our...
Okay.
If there be no further business to come before the Board of Supervisors' meeting, we will not recess until John says so.
So sorry. Matt, can I ask that you, as the administration, fill out that Rotary Table of Eight by just circulating around the county employees?
We can do that.
Just that way, we're not thinking, is it happening? Is it not happening? Let's, but to Chip's point, let's make sure we get eight.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, we'll do our best. And if we can't get county staff, we'll, we'll float it over to the school board.
Unless there's an objection, we will recess and reconvene for public hearings at 7:00 P.M. Want me to drop the gavel on that? There you go. The time has it at 7:00 P.M. They appointed hours for opening these public hearings. And in order to facilitate the folks from Wilton on, on the dog ordinance, we're gonna reverse the, the order of the public hearings from what's in your Board Packet. And I suppose at this point, the application presentation will be made by staff.
Yes, sir. We were requested to draft ordinance based pretty much entirely on the ordinance that's already in effect at Piankatank Shores. We passed an ordinance in Piankatank Shores several years ago, which dealt with dogs running at large, preventing, placing some requirements on property owners to have their dogs under control. We have with us tonight Ricky Warren, our Animal Control Officer, who can speak to any specific questions on the enforcement of the ordinance in Piankatank Shores. But this ordinance would indeed affect Coves of Wilton Creek subdivision. It's really the exact same ordinance as we have in Piankatank Shores, just redrafted and crafted to represent the Coves of Wilton Creek. The ordinance does apply to the Coves of Wilton Creek parcels included on Tax Map 43C, recorded in the books of Circuit Clerk's Office. There you go. Say that 10 times, man. And it does prevent, and put certain requirements on dogs running at large, not being under the owner's control. We have with us tonight several members, I believe, who live in the subdivision, who either want to speak in favor or against. The ordinance is in your packet. If there are any specific questions after the public hearing, Ricky and I will attempt to answer them. Ricky, Betty, and I will attempt to answer them.
Well, in order of business, this is where I open the meeting to, or the hearing to comments from the public. So anybody that would like to come forward, please state your name and where you, where you reside, and address your comments to the Board, please.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to comment at the hearing today on the Coves at Wilton Creek Dog Control Ordinance. My name is Ken Layden. We live at the Coves at Wilton Creek. Our address is 146 Oyster Cove Landing. My wife and I have been residents there since 1988, so we're, call ourselves the pioneers of the Coves at Wilton Creek. As most of our neighbors know, we spend a lot of time walking through the community. It's one of our hobbies. And by far, the friendliest neighbors that we have in the community are the dogs. The dogs are great. We have to visit all the dogs as we walk through. If we don't, they bark at us and say, you know, come on over and say hello. So most of the dogs are great. The owners of the dogs are great. And, you know, present no problems because the owners are responsible, and they make sure that the, the dogs are meeting the community guidelines for being under control. But we have had a couple of incidents in recent years where we've had one owner in the community who was knocked down by an overly friendly or overly aggressive dog, depending on how you look at it. And we've also had another neighbor on a separate incident where they're, they were walking their dogs on leash, and it was attacked by another neighbor's dog. So there, there have been some issues that we think this ordinance would be very helpful in, in addressing. And so, again, as it drafted, it seems like it, it would be a reasonable tool. And the remedies that it's recommending don't appear to be excessive or too onerous on the owners. It just requires, you know, additional responsibility. And appreciate that Piankatank Shores has already sort of gone through this process, and hopefully has found it useful to them. So I wanted to mention that the, as I read the ordinance, it only applies to the Coves at Wilton Creek. It will not address owners of dogs outside of our property. And it shouldn't affect other pet owners in the community, or in the county. It should only be addressing those here within the Coves at Wilton Creek. I also want to point out that there was a petition circulated within the community, and numerous residents signed the petition requesting the ordinance. And also that, I understand, our Homeowners' Association Board has sent a letter to this Board of Supervisors in support of the ordinance. So, again, we, we hope that you will approve it as drafted. We think it would be a useful tool in, in keeping our community safe and happy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
If you're representing four or more people, you can talk long. Thank you. I'm Ann Wickwire, and I live at 204 Oyster Cove Landing in the Coves. We have been property owners in the Coves since about 2000, I think. Presently, do not have a dog, but when we first bought in the Coves, I did have a dog. She was a leash dog. I do know that there's a different dynamic if you're walking a dog on a leash and there are dogs that are running free. The dog on the leash will get defensive. And I did have my dog attacked. Luckily, the owner was maybe 10 minutes away, so no damage occurred. I know of one dog that was killed while being walked. He was a very old dog. The other dog, again, was free. So I think responsible dog owners will keep their dogs on a leash. And if you pass this ordinance, it will make that a requirement that can be enforced. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
John Galloway, I live at the Coves of Wilton Creek. Spoke before you last month. Appreciate the opportunity to speak again. I think one of the things that I tried to emphasize last month was the nature of our community is quite a bit different from a lot of the rural nature of Middlesex County. We have homes that are closer together. They don't have the long driveways. We have short driveways. People like to walk through the neighborhood. They walk in front of a house that's got dogs that are sitting on the porch or sitting out on the lawn. And, you know, what do dogs do? They, they're, you know, they're either defending their territory, they want to go see what's going on, they come running out. Some of them are friendly. Some of them, as I said, can be overly rambunctious, knock somebody down. You have the letter from Mr. Nutt about the serious injuries that his wife sustained. And if dogs are coming charging out of their yard towards people that are walking their dogs on leashes, as, as Ann said, it can get ugly in a hurry. The dynamic just does not work out, and also Warren can probably testify to that as well. So we've had rules in our community. Our HOA documents require everyone to keep their dog on their own property or have it on a leash if it's off the property. And, you know, there's ways that you can comply with this. You can be out in the yard with your dog. You can have your dog tied up. And a lot of us have gotten invisible fences. We, within a week of, we first moved into the Coves, had our house built, we had the folks come in and install a visible fence, so our dogs will stay inside the yard. There are some people, unfortunately, that choose not to do that. It's expensive, or it's inconvenient, and they just don't want to bother, and so they let their dogs be out free. It's a small number that caused problems for everybody else, but it is a real problem. And if three or four times a year, you get, you know, effectively assaulted by dogs that are, that are running around loose, and you don't know if it's gonna be a fatal incident, a, you know, minor bite, or, or just a scare, it's, it's very unsettling. And this is a nice place to live, otherwise, but this is a problem that we would like to see addressed. So, you know, we've had this rule in effect, but it's been hard to enforce because there's not a real good mechanism there without some sort of county law to back us up. So that's why we've, we've looked at what was done in Piankatank Shores. We'd like to have that applied here. We have the, our own Board of Directors has sent you the letter saying they support it because this will help them enforce the rules within our community and keep things safer and calmer and everybody happy. And, you know, I don't think these dogs are bad, per se. We, we have a few bad owners, but I think this will actually serve as a deterrent for them. I don't think they're gonna be called, we're gonna be calling Animal Control out there every week. I think just the idea that this is in effect, people are gonna realize, I've gotta get serious now, keep my dogs on my property, and, you know, stop troubling other people. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Be sure and come back next month.
What's on the agenda?
Hard to tell. Be surprised.
I'll talk botox.
Do we have anybody else that would like to address the, please, sir? Nope. Y'all do rock, paper, scissors.
Hi. My name is John King. Everybody calls me Jack. Address 164D Mariners Point Lane in Hartfield, one of the condo units in the Coves at Wilton Creek development. I'm speaking for myself, but I'm speaking with a perspective of being a board member and treasurer at the Coves. When something comes up in the community, Lord knows, we are not a police force, especially the 70-year-olds that dominate our Board, so we ought to be able to call the sheriff. And when some things have come up involving dogs, we're 70 years old. We've been dogged enough already. We would like to be able to call the Animal Control Officer. And the fact that the ordinance, as it now stands, says we can't really call in Animal Control until some harm has been done, makes that a bit frustrating with the Piankatank Shores model. We're able to take a more preventative scope and get some help from the county even earlier, which is why I'm, I'm supporting it. Dogs have opinions and make snap judgments. And I'll close with, we all remember that wonderful television series, All Creatures Great and Small. Comes from an English hymn. I forget the first line. Second line is, "All creatures great and small." But the last two lines, I do remember. "And dogs were made to bark and bite. The good Lord made them all." That's all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak to the dog ordinance?
Tom Figum, and now you know where I'm from. The problem isn't the dogs. After being attacked a couple of times, I went and got a, you know, concealed carry permit. And I conceal and carry because I'm not gonna be charged by a dog again. And it's not the dog, but it's the owner who never trains the dog, never has the dog out on a leash, never is out with the dog, et cetera, et cetera. And that's what my concern is, and that's why I totally support what he has and what I have, my concealed carry. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
I wasn't gonna do this. Monica Sanderson, Toppie, Virginia. We used to be, have a homeowners' association in Hanover County, and we had a dog issue. We did a vote. 87% of the people resented the dogs that ran loose. Rest of them pretty much didn't care. But the problem is, is that we always want government to fix it. By the time you call Ricky over here, and he gets there, the dog is gone. You don't know who did it. But I'll tell you what will work. A can of Wasp and Hornet spray. And if a dog charges you, and you hit him with it, and not the can, but the stuff in it, and the dog will not only leave you alone, it'll never come near you again. And it's not a permanent damage thing to the dog. And it makes it much easier to go walking or riding your bike where you run across a lot of interesting things. They can knock you off the bike. So you carry that. It solves the problem. But I don't live at Coves of Wilton Creek, so they can do what they like.
Thank you, Monica.
Can I bring my name up?
Come on. This is your public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you for listening. I know it's been a long day for you all. My name's Maria Galloway, and I live in the Coves at 40 Oyster Cove Landing. I was attacked while walking two of my dogs by some dogs in our community that had been notorious for getting out of the yard. They were vicious dogs, unfortunately, and flayed my male whippet in front of my eyes. So these dogs, after this incident's happened, and by the way, Animal Control did an incredible job. They came in. It was considered a dangerous dog situation, so I was able to get some help from the county after this incident. And when that happened, Maria was wonderful. She, she just, and she actually helped rehabilitate these dogs. They had been starved. They'd been left out in the cold. They barely had no food, no water, and that's why they were getting out of their yard. So I understood. However, as the weeks went by, I heard stories from our community, oh, we knew about those dogs. We knew that they were getting out. We knew that they had been abused. We knew, we knew, we knew. And it was just, I, I have to say, it was just so disappointing because those people should have called. They should have. They said, nobody's doing anything at the HOA because they have no ability to get this law to work for us for just a loose dog. So, so much could have been avoided. And so this is my, my feeling. This is what I want to represent to you. These dogs are my family. And it's like my family is being... my family, and it's like my family is being threatened. And I don't want to be threatened like that, I don't want to be walking around with my dogs and worrying about this anymore, and that's why I'm here tonight. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alrighty then, who else? Does that do it for public comment? In that case, we will close public comment on this issue, and we will entertain any questions and discussion by board members.
Ricky, come on up.
Good evening.
No, my question is, you know, how have you been controlling down at, not Kewa- not Kewa's Point, Piankatank Shores? How many calls and, and different things?
Piankatank Shores, maybe in the past 16 years, I've had a dozen calls from them, and that's about it. I've had four people that were written up, three of which were dismissed in court, and one was actually fined. The three that were dismissed in court is because if you read the Code section, and the way judges look at it and attorneys look at it, they're very specific of what it says, every one of those instances, the dogs escaped, that they won't, the owners didn't allow them to run loose, the dog escaped. So, those were thrown out of court. The other issue I had with Piankatank Shores is people will call, say I saw Joe Blow's dog running at large, it's a such-and-such dog, I come out, look for it, and you know Piankatank Shores is like a maze back there, I never see it. I see a bunch of squirrels running around, but other than that, I'll, I'll never see the dog. So I go back to the person, I say, well, if you wish to press charges, I need a written statement and for you to testify in court as per the Code section, and 90, actually, I've never had anybody, nobody has ever testified in court about a dog running at large at Piankatank Shores in 16 years.
How old is this ordinance in Piankatank Shores? How long has that been in effect?
That, it was there when I took over.
Wow, okay. So over 16 years old?
It, it's kind of old, the wording probably needs to be updated a little bit, but...
Had been in place that long, I wouldn't have thought it would.
Because the way it's written now, it's really not a leash law, it's a control law. Nowhere does it specify when a leash, it just says contained. So technically, you can walk down the road with your dog next to you without a leash on it, as long as it's in control.
Does that satisfy your question? Mr. Mansfield?
I've got no question. Swannoff?
What is the case in other parts of the county? What's the procedure when, in county, outside of Piankatank Shores?
Technically, if a dog has a collar and a license on it, it can go wherever it wants to go. Now, if you see a dog without, without a collar, without a tag, technically, that's running at large. So in other words, it's considered a stray dog.
Okay. And then are complaints by citizens against a particular home animal, a particular dog, or a particular house of dogs, or, or owner, are those documented? In other words, if you get a complaint, do you know that this is the fourth complaint about this animal or this owner?
Yes. Typically, we do. Most of the complaints we get are pretty much nuisance complaints.
You mean barking type thing?
Barking, digging up the yard, using their yard for restroom, what have you, which we honestly don't have. We have a Code section for that, but it's more up to the complainant, because unless animal control witnesses themselves, we can't charge for that particular incident.
But if you do get a complaint about a dog either attacking another dog, or knocking over a person, or being aggressive, if that's documented?
That's documented.
Is there, are there steps in terms of what you do?
The first thing we look at is the definition of, is this a dangerous dog situation?
Right.
And they, actually, the state just changed this Code section, which pretty much almost put it in the ACO's hand to make the determination, because before it said, you shall go to demonstrate. If you had a chihuahua bite you, your own dog bites you a couple of years ago, even though it's your dog, I would have to come out and do a dangerous dog investigation. But they changed the Code section from shall to may, so it's pretty much a discretion animal control officer. However, that being said, they do define in the state code the definition of a dangerous dog. They've added a minor scratch, or something like that, or, or a nip, and that's quote-unquote state code nip, is not a dangerous dog situation. Severe injuries is what they've gone to now.
Do you know how many calls you've had to the Coes at Wilton Creek?
I do know of the dog and dog situation, and I remember, it wasn't running at large, someone was complaining because these people had their dogs outside and didn't have a doghouse, which might be the two dogs that y'all are talking about anyway. That was years ago. Be honest with you, I get more, if you put all the calls together, which hasn't been many, I get more cat, people complaining about cats than I do about the dogs. And you hear them laughing behind it.
Try putting the cat on the leash.
Well, technically, at the end of my statement, I was going to say this, I mean, I, whatever the discretion the board chooses, I will do y'all's bidding. But the way I sort of feel about these kind of Code sections, I get more complaints about cats than I do dogs. If you go and do dogs, you might as well do cats. That's pretty much it, they're just as destructive as a dog is, more so.
To, to human beings?
And they bite humans, too.
Well, I would like to limit the conversation tonight to business.
Okay, I was just saying, that was my, that was my observation as an officer of 16 years.
Anybody else have any questions of our animal control officer? Which I got that ACO.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Not real good on an acronym, but I got that. Alrighty, in that case, we have closed public comments from the public, we have answered the questions of members of the board, and the chair would entertain a motion for action on this proposed ordinance. Mr. Chairman?
I move that we adopt Article 5, gives Wilton Cove, oh, I'm sorry, Wilton Creek Dog Control Ordinance.
It's actually Article 6.
Oh, is that Article 6? I'm sorry.
That thing.
But you're, you're amending and reworking the entire code.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion duly seconded, is there any further discussion, any ordinance at hand?
Next, I have no problem with the ordinance, I just, you know, I don't know your community there, but I don't know how many people that are, you know, are summer, summer people that come down in the summertime, because I know you're, you're probably the ones that's there most of the time, and you're, you're residents, but I know you have a lot of residents that, you know, some, wintertime, they go to Florida and different places like that. I just want to make sure that, you know, you have communicated, which I figure you have, communicated to them to let them know what was going on, that's, that's all.
Alright, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so ordered. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. We appreciate the help.
Alright, moving right along, would you like to talk to us on the ordinance pertaining to taxation?
Yes, sir. We'll give the folks a minute, they may want to...
Thank you, Ricky.
I think it's effective immediately. We made it effective immediately, didn't we?
I saw a cartoon the other day of a dog sitting behind a desk in somebody's front yard, and the owner was on the telephone saying, your dog's in my yard doing his business again.
Yeah, I saw that. Thanks for the warning. Yeah, that's why. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next public, you go ahead.
Just, just to confirm that the board understands that this adoption will be effective immediately once the board is in agreement on that, right? I was just making sure.
Mr. Chairman, next public hearing is on the transient occupancy tax. I'll read you a couple of key provisions. Transient occupancy tax, otherwise known as the lodging tax, applies to space or rooms furnished in the transient, including the total charge made by any hotel, room, or space furnished in the transient. If the charge made by such hotel or transient includes any charge for services or accommodations in addition to that of lodging and/or the use of space, then such portion of total charges is represented, only the room and/or space rental shall be distinctly set out and billed to such transient by such hotel as appropriate, as a separate item. Transient occupancy tax has been advertised at 2%, the board is familiar with the Code section, it requires any additional tax over the 2% to be approved by the General Assembly or be allowed by the General Assembly, and then those funds, the portion over the 2% would need to be set aside for tourism and economic development purposes. Specifically here tonight, we're hearing a transient occupancy tax on the 2% lodging tax that is pretty much allowed by right of any county in the Commonwealth of Virginia without special General Assembly approval. Couple of key points, as the board is aware from previous discussions, this transient occupancy tax does not apply to an individual or group of same individuals who, for a period of greater than 30 days, rent sites. A question early in the process came, well, what about the annual rent or annual lease sites at the campgrounds, would they have to pay the transient occupancy tax? No, the answer is no. If it's less than 30 days, if they camp less than 30 days, they would, anything greater than 30 days, they're exempt from the tax.
Except if it's an annual rental, they will in all likelihood pay personal property tax.
That's correct, because the, the facility is there. There's also an exemption allowed for anyone who pays on a room rental to any hospital, medical clinic, or convalescent home, home for the age. That was actually a provision that was researched and added to this ordinance by our county attorney, she saw that in another ordinance and thought we needed to have that exemption since we do have nursing homes and other medical care facilities. With that, if there are any questions, it's pretty much standard ordinance, I believe the bulk of this ordinance came from Akamak County, it mirrors their ordinance that's been in effect.
Thank you, sir. We've had the presentation, my staff, and at this point, I'd like to open the hearing to any comments from the public. Please come forward and state your name and address, and let us know what you think. You can queue up in the center aisle. I gather that...
I just want to ask, would this tax apply in Urbana?
Urbana already has a lodging tax, that applies. No, it's our understanding. Similar to the mill stacks, Tom, they got there first with their mill stack, so their, their tax preempted.
Okay, we will, Monica, are you going to comment?
Come on back.
Where can the chickens?
I hope you like me coming up here, because I, I kind of like it sometimes. I'm supporting this, I think this is great, I just thought there might be a ton of people who are renting stuff that are coming up here talking against it, and y'all need some support with this. But I, I think it's great, it's for people that are outside the county, and we need something to deflect the real estate tax and all that other stuff y'all are spending money on.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anybody else like to address the board on the lodging tax? Hearing none, we'll close the public comment period. Are there any questions or discussion amongst fellow supervisors? Mr. Mansfield?
We had a discussion about B&Bs a little bit earlier. What is the, what is our final decision on B&Bs and, at this time, and the lodging tax?
Well, based on the discussion earlier, and my understanding from the Commissioner of Revenue's office, it's their intention to tax Airbnb's. And of course, B&Bs are considered hotels and other lodging facilities, so they would be taxed.
Okay, then there, then there was a caveat where they would not be taxed.
That was, that was a zoning caveat.
That was a question of zoning, if you tried to apply the same rules of a bed and breakfast to an Airbnb, and those are sort of up in the air, as I understand, we really don't have a determination there.
And specifically that, for the public that are here, there are some instances of people operating Airbnb's in certain zoning districts that may need to go through some zoning actions to continue to operate. But it's my understanding that it's the Commissioner of Revenue's office's position, he indeed will tax those.
Okay, that's not a consideration tonight?
No, sir. No, sir. It may, it may require a board to follow up on certain zoning actions in months hence, but not tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion from the board, or the county administration?
Well, there is, there is one other item, I think, that has been a particular concern to some of the board members, and that is whether this tax would apply to transient boat slips or not. The Commissioner's office and staff in the Commissioner's office have revised their original opinion, there are no other counties that have this tax that appear to be taxing transient boat slips, so their take is probably not.
I, I, it wouldn't seem, appear to me that it would be possible to...
When we started the discussion, what we had heard from their office was that they, there were some counties charging, they went back and checked with those counties, and they do not tax transient boat slips, at least not at this time.
Alrighty then, what is your pleasure? The board will entertain a motion on this proposal.
I'll make a motion that we implement a lodging tax.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion properly and duly seconded, is there any further discussion on the lodging tax?
Just a point of clarification, whether we have it drafted, I believe it takes effect July 1?
Right. Hearing no more, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so ordered. Alright.
Mr. Chairman, the last item we had, and I phoned Larry Tuning with the Southside Sentinel, is a slight correction to the total amount of the budget...
Right.
...that the board sent to public hearing. We did find one area where there was a small discrepancy to the tune of about $1,469. It actually reduced the amount of the budget being sent to public hearing to $26,246,196, and that's expenditures and revenues. And we just want to make sure that's disclosed, the board may want to send that to public hearing or acknowledge that modification.
Very good, is there any other business to come before this?
Were you asking for a motion to send this?
I think in an abundance of caution, you probably should.
I, I'll move that we send this latest update as of 7:35 to public hearing of the budget.
Motion seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so ordered.
See y'all on the 19th.
The next order of business is to recess.
No, Mr. Chairman, you have a public comment period.
Yeah.
You have another public comment period.
What if I may just ask for a point of clarification for the work session? Is it the board's intention at this time to hold a public hearing in this room, or do we want to consider relocating?
It's hard to say.
Yeah.
It's hard to say.
I, I think we could probably start off here, but if we hear a lot, we'll advertise it that it may be potentially moved due to crowd or something.
Legally, we can put a sign on the door directing them to where we're going to go.
You sure can.
And that, that covers it.
The problem, the problem with that, I got to disclose this, this is, the sheriff will react somewhat negatively, and he's going to be expected to provide security.
Well, this was, this was my next point. I, I know we, we have adopted a rule saying that we will poll the board, and the majority will rule if we're going to change the venue of the meeting.
Right, yeah, I don't want that to happen again. My speakers put out in the yard and all this stuff like you didn't pay.
I understand, I understand perfectly. However, the one other consideration is Sheriff Bushy and his desire to keep crowds from being unruly and, and keep everybody safe, and we do give up a certain amount of control when we change the venue. So, all I'm saying is, I would like to consult with the sheriff when we poll the board on that decision, to see what his take is on the subject matter, what we got, who wants to come, and all that sort of thing.
Right, but, you know, you still got occupancy rules that you have, there's too many people in here, you know, for file code. So regardless, you know, of what, the sheriff, the sheriff going to have to go wherever we go.
I understand.
For protection, you know, and...
For protection, you know, it's not like, you know, we're more secure here than we down at the school. I mean, you know, he's still going to have to be protected, one way or the other. You're going to have somebody, you're going to have deputies outside and inside, regardless.
We'll make contingencies for both in an abundance of caution.
And I apologize for almost omitting the second public comment period. So, I will now open the end of our meeting to public comment. Please, somebody say something.
Anything about chicken?
And I've been instructed by...
Are you closing?
We're closing public comment, and we are recessing till the next work session. If there be...
Next public hearing on April 19th.
Correct.
April 19th?
If there be no objection, we stand recessed.
There you go.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right.